Go from there, how's that sound? All right, you're recording?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. We will call to order our October 27th, 2020 Town of Windermere Workshop to order. Tonight, we will be having some presentations and public feedback and discussion with council to go over our first and fourth stormwater concept plan discussions as well as our Bessie Stormwater Basin Plan. There'll be no decisions made tonight. What we'll be doing is getting information, asking questions of the experts as well as hearing from residents with all of their input. Everyone will have the opportunity to comment if you want to do that. Now's the time to put your name into the Zoom chat. And we can go ahead and make sure that everyone has that opportunity. You can choose to comment early in the meeting during the normal public comment section. Or you can defer until after the presentation. I see Councilman Kinley has joined us. And that confirms that we have a quorum this evening. Just from public decorum, you know, remember the rules that we have. We don't, we don't need to clap or call anybody names. We've been doing these a long time. We do very, very well. So just remind everyone to be respectful. Also, we ask that you do not text any council members. And if you receive a text as a council person, we ask that you ignore that text and do not respond. That's for public records as well as sunshine law. We don't want to have any violations there. So with those items out of the way, we will go ahead and begin. We'll go ahead and start with our pledge of allegiance. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and if you'll bow your head for our invocation. Father, as always, we pray for your guidance as we make decisions for our town on behalf of our community that we are so appreciative and blessed to live. We also ask that you, as always, protect our first responders, all of those who serve us around the world in our armed forces, keeping us safe day and night. We ask that we have an orderly and safe and fair election. And we look, as we look to the future, amen. All right. I see for public comment, I know we have, we have three, three bartos, I heard. Is that correct?
That is correct. But there's two bartos and one scroggins, actually.
Oh, even better. Okay, two bartos, one scrogg. Would you guys like to defer? Or would you like to do your public comment at this point in time?
I believe we will defer until the Bessie issue comes up.
Fair enough. I see Brandy Gaines is here as well, 835 Oakdale. She would like to defer. Susan Carter also from 106 Palm Street would like to defer as well as Nora Brophy, 426 Magnolia. We will, are there any other public comment at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to defer as well. I put my name and both addresses in chat box.
All right, yeah, as long as your name's in chat box, that helps me a lot and make sure we don't forget you. All right, okay.
Thank you.
So seeing no one with public comment at this particular point in the conversation, we would like to go ahead and begin with our first and forest stormwater concept plan discussion. And I believe that John, Victor, and Howard are going to present on that one. We'll go ahead and let them present. We'll go ahead in that point in time, have some public comment, and then council will discuss as we go. All right. Gentlemen.
John, did you want to start off or did you want me to?
Yeah, I can start off and then Hal, if you want to kind of explain the design. So one of the things that we're looking at on the first and Forest Street was looking at how do we design for the future relative to what impacts we may impart on it for Second Avenue, looking at it holistically, but also taking into account trying to maintain the character of the streets as we've done in the past. One of the things that we wanted to do to make sure through this is remember this is really just a stormwater improvement component. We're not getting into road design or anything else. This is purely us just looking at outfalls for the potential future design of what we're doing at West Second Avenue as well as looking at the system as a whole that we've actually worked with Kim Lee Horn over the last year on and also some of the residents. We've, you know, been working on maintaining the system. Hal and I have met a number of times looking at just purely an outfall project. That's what we're looking at here. So it's a very simplistic version of what we're doing. It's purely just a stormwater management issue. Looking for the future of the Second Avenue as well as how do we look at improvements to the current system for continued outfall. And so I'm, I'm going to kind of defer to how to kind of talk to you about the minimal stormwater improvements that we're looking at on the plan. So how, if you want to take over on that?
Sure. So as John stated, this plan focuses on just the stormwater aspect of the project, more of a stormwater maintenance project, trying to maximize the use of what was previously designed four years ago and constructed. We've been coordinating with a Galora Engineering who is designing West Second Avenue. And a lot of the drainage that was flowing from West Second Avenue is being accounted for as part of that project. And with that coordination, we've come up with the plan that, that, like I said, that we're leaving the existing road as is. The existing road here is shown in the hatch mark. And Victor, if you can highlight that hatching since you're sharing the screen. And Victor. So this project, we are not proposing to reconstruct the dirt road. We're leaving it as is. If we need to bring in some fill for the dirt road, we'll work with the town to do that. But this is regrading the existing swales, which you'll see with the existing crosshatch and the green. So you already have swales in those locations, but they, we just want to make them more well-defined and more conducive to conveying and capturing the runoff from the dirt road. And we would also recommend two additional improvements would be the area that's shown in dark green is a swell that you currently do have, do not have, I'm sorry, that you, that's currently not there. And that we're proposing to grade that as a secondary outfall to, to the system along first. So that gives you a conveyance from south to north to get where it's supposed to be going without relying solely on the French drain system that's out there. And also, we're going to add a second outfall pipe to the existing drainage pipe system that's out there, that French drain system. And it's a little hard to see, but we're proposing to add an additional outfall pipe to that same system to push that water, to keep on to, to convey that water faster and get it out of there sooner. Victor, if you want to add any more detail to that, but that's the general approach that we're moving forward with, that we are presenting tonight for this plan.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Victor. Before, before you could get into the details of it, I just, I do want to make certain that everybody understands that this is really kind of more of a a stormwater maintenance. And so really, we're just working within the confines of the swales and the, in the conveyance system, which is why we've been able to kind of maintain what we're working on specifically because it's purely just pipe and water systems that we're actually looking at under this. And then also, this is also predicated on the fact that Kim Lee Horn is now coordinating with Mike Galora for the Second Avenue. So what we are is preparing our fields for the future as well in the stormwater management. So I just want to make sure that that's a clear clarity.
Right. And that's a good point, John. And, and this project is unique is that the town did spend quite a bit of money four years ago with the, with the, the ditch bottom inlet and the French drain system that's out there. And so really, this, this approach is still like, like John had said, is a, is a stormwater maintenance type of approach, improvement plan, where we're trying to maximize the usage of what's already been previously constructed.
And what, what you do not see in this conceptual design is the six feet for the water utility that was on purpose. When we get into the actual design, should town council want to move forward with again, that water line down for us like we're doing with all the other projects per the master utility plan, we'd be able to select which side it would go on where it would be least impactful to trees, environmental sensitive areas, stuff like that. So we haven't chosen which side of the roadway would be yet. But once we get into the actual nitty gritty of the design, we can select a side where it's going to be less impactful. And again, at six feet, it is just flat grass.
Go ahead, Victor.
Yeah, yeah. So the, the design still provides that contingency by using the existing system that was designed and constructed and permitted in the past, but also provide an open grade, positive drainage system on top to be able to get the water out of this area flooding and into now to, you know, improve, optimize outfalls dry downstream of the first avenue. So be able to allow for water to come and release with a positive grading out. The other, the coordination with the John mentioned is that another of the water that used to bring silt into this area now will be coming into deep, tying to the existing pipe system with its own pipe system. So potentially reducing these, you know, sediment transport into this area, which was creating some of the ditches to be clogged, some of the pipes to be clogged and therefore creating the funding that you saw out there in the past. But with these, we provide, you know, obviously there's the main that aspect of these, continue cleaning the pipes out there. But also the fact that we have a contingency system on top with positive grading towards the out.
Yeah, that's, that's the presentation is just again, this is the most minimalistic fix that we thought we could do without the water utility being placed in there. But when we went out there on Monday, again, we looked at the swales and we looked at how we can establish those swales. And with the second, West Second Avenue Stormwater Project, I think that's going to assist greatly, especially with the, the areas of improvement at Second and Forest. So with that said, we're, we're happy to answer any questions about the proposal that is in front of you tonight.
Thank you, guys. A quick clarifying point. Hal spoke of an additional outfall, I believe, was terminology he utilized in. I can't see that. Can you give me an idea where that is?
Sure, Victor, can you zoom into the right-hand side of the drawing and we'll highlight those two pipes for, for the mayor?
Yeah, I may just put it in red here. Just connecting to an existing system and connecting to a pipe that goes along. Current is existing pipe that goes along first.
And Jim, Mayor, one of the things that you, you may have heard, it was quick, the way that Victor said it, but this is more of a contingency system for us. The system is functioning, but what we wanted to do is provide this additional overflow that allows us to ensure that once we potentially add not additional water, because actually with the Second Avenue, we're just controlling it better. So what we wanted to do is put this kind of contingency in for an additional overflow. And if you remember, that was actually one of the first suggestions that came back when Kimberly Horn did the initial assessment. And so Robert and I felt that's probably the most important thing that we should be doing. And then some minor swell adjustments. And we think that with this minimalistic approach through just stormwater adjustments, that we should be able to be able to help the residents while at the same time provide a contingency against improvements against Second Avenue. And that's really what we're trying to do in this particular one, which is why it's really just a stormwater improvement. We're not really getting into roadway improvement here.
Yeah, that's fine, John. I appreciate that. I just, I just could not see where that additional outflow was. I want to clarify that. It, where it was and what it would do. And then the, how much of the burden will the Second Avenue improvements reduce on this stretch? Do we have any estimate of that?
I'm going to have to defer to the hydraulic calc, but one of the things that is a benefit is that we will be controlling and also capturing water upstream that we're not capturing now. As we begin to look at improvements on Palm and some of the other areas. So in addition, it should not be any additional or it should not be, if anything, it could be a little bit less, but I'd have to defer to how I'm not involved in the hydraulic calc on it. And I know that's a kind of coordination effort between Mike and Kimberly Horn at this point.
Sure. So, so we've been coordinating with Mike and we've looked at his plans, provide our thoughts on those. He, he has outlets at the intersections of Palm and also at, at Butler and Second Avenue. So he's capturing a lot of that surface runoff at those intersections as well as, you know, with, with his design, he's catching a lot of the runoff along Second, and that will be piped. So we no longer kind of have to worry about that getting into Forest from a, a surface flow standpoint. All that should be captured by endless and piped. So, so that really, that helps us out from an overland flow perspective. And so we've been coordinating with Mike on that. And I don't have an exact number for you, but I know that he is taking care of that runoff and that, that's helping us. Victor, if you want to add some more detail?
Yeah, yeah, I was going to mention that we had the opportunity to look at their, their plans and the original design of this exist, existing system that we are upgrading had the same, was designed to consider runoff from the upstream area. So since he is really not changing the, you know, the basin area is, is the piping system is, is adequate. We just have to provide that resiliency to, you know, to allow it not to get clogged, to be allowed to not to, you know, to improve the, the outfall all the way to the first having a system. And that's what we're doing here. So the, the, and then that Cal says, you know, by not looking at this project as a standalone project and looking, you know, relates to the two jobs together, there's a way to be less intrusive. And that's what you're looking at for that.
All right, thank you. Counsel, would you prefer to hear public comment for this particular project at this time? Or would you guys like to discuss and then have that public comment?
Public comment.
Yeah, public comment.
I agree. Okay, sounds good. All right, those of, those of you that are interested in commenting on this particular project for Forest and First. We can go ahead and hear that now. Who do we have for First and Forest?
Mary didn't have anybody signed up, so if you want to open her up, we can see if anybody raises their hands. But we have Keith Carson that has raised his hand to speak.
Okay, so Keith lives right there. Let's, let's hear from Keith first and then we'll see. I also saw Teresa's hand, actual hand up, so go from there. Judge?
I, how good my connection is. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you can, sir.
All right, thanks. Keith Carson wants for Forest Street. Thank the council for taking our wishes into consideration. I'm, I'm optimistic and highly in favor of this new measured approach with the additional outfall pipe to hopefully handle any contingencies, unforeseen contingencies with the Second Ave. We're encouraged, the council is encouraged for the existing plants. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we heard 99% of that. So and then I see Teresa Myers as her hand up. Teresa, your address and full name? You're muted. Hey, Teresa, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm Teresa Schretzman Myers. I'm at 2713 Tryon Place, Windermere, Florida, 34786. And I'm looking at the, the regrading of the existing swell there on the top part there. And I'm looking at the tree canopy right in its pathway. You're talking about regrading in the critical root zone of those big oaks there. So I'm curious as to how you're going to regrade without impacting the critical root zone of those giant oaks that are all along that green proposed swell and sodding area and the regrading of that, that particular proposed swell and sodding area. I mean, you're, you're looking right above it from the bird's eye view. You've got some big oaks right there. That's some seriously large live oaks. So what's the plan? How are you going to regrade without impacting the roots that literally hold those trees up? The critical root zone is how those trees stay stable and stay up in windstorms. And if you're talking about grading the critical root zone, you're cutting those roots, you're impacting those roots.
Teresa, the, just, just so you know, this is John Fitzgibbon. One of the things, we, we actually had swales there that we, and we were very careful going around the trees, especially that one that House on right now. And so what we do need to do, and we, we do, obviously, this is a preliminary concept design. We obviously will take that into account, no different than we took it into account with a lot of the stuff that we're doing. You know, for the town facilities and throughout the town. So as we look at these concepts, we also understand that desire and that component to make sure. In addition, the swales themselves aren't, aren't super deep. So we're not getting into the, into the craziness of depth, but those are the kind of things that we'll have to look at. Again, remember, this is a new concept plan that we're just looking at and proposing. And so we will take those into account as we continue on through the design.
Hopefully that helps. Any further comment for this particular project from the public? All right, see none. Counsel, your thoughts? Counselperson Martini?
Up.
Hey, Bill.
A couple of questions. This is not the same plan that's shown on the agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, and why not? I mean, what was this updated?
Like this was updated today after a discussion that we had with Hal and the engineers. John and I, once we received the concept plan on Thursday, went out there yesterday, took a look at it and also coordinated with Mike once we saw the updated plan for West Second Avenue and Forest. And then we had a further discussion relative to that. And that's why we were able to reduce the amount of impacts for this project was based on some of the stuff that's being done on West Second Avenue.
So this looks like there's actually more swell than what is shown on the agenda. Am I, am I wrong on that? And, and my other question is, you said the six-foot utility easement is not shown on here. Where would that go if it were to be included later?
I, I think there's actually less, there's less impacts to the property owners that are along this corridor. You know.
If you take a look at it, most of it. I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the one that's on the agenda and it's got less, far less swell than what is shown on the screen. So just would like.
I think one of the things that might be a little confusing on that agenda piece that you have is that what you don't see highlighted in green is the stormwater pond on the corner right there, which was, which was a much larger impact. And that was one of the things that Robert and I looked at as we began. And again, remember, some of these are just regrading some of the existing swales that are already there as part of the forest. So really, the only new swell is the dark green one. And that's actually a reduction from the agenda relative to the pond. And I think that just might be a highlight color issue.
So that pond is going away? That wouldn't be.
Correct.
Well, back to Teresa's comment, this, this, the one on the agenda doesn't show any impact to that 36-inch oak tree. But, but yeah, I know you've already covered that point, John.
Yeah, and that's why we hadn't put the note. Obviously, a 36-inch oak tree is to remain. That's why the notes there. And so our job is to look at concepts and you know, this is kind of like watching sausage get made, you know, so we're looking at concepts to ultimate design. So for us, you know, now as we start to look at the flow, we start doing hydraulic calculations, this is where it becomes incumbent upon us to go back and you know, modify the design appropriately for those types of notes.
Okay, I talked to a couple of the residents on Forest Street and they, they have told me that they're currently, or they haven't had any recent flooding issues because of maintenance has been stepped up. So just wanted to add that. And I think they would be appreciative, obviously, of a reduced approach such as this.
Thank you, Counselperson Martini.
I think you did ask a question about the, the water utility. And again, once we get into design with the six foot, we would figure out which side of the roadway would be least impactful. You know, to have that six-foot swab of grass. And if we get into, you know, tree areas or anything like that, again, we work with an arborist on seeing what we can do as far as boring in order to get the water to everybody that lives along that.
So, but would it go on the outside edge of the swales or on, or we'd move the swales over?
It would go on the outside. It would go on the outside of the swales.
Okay.
Which is, I mean, the, the swells that you see with the hash marks is just reestablishing the swales. So instead of going further one way or the other, we're just trying to figure out, okay, which side can we put it on? That again, is going to be least impactful to everybody and what they perceive to be their front yards.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselperson Martini. Counselperson McKinley, I believe you were ready to make some comments, sir?
Correct. And this is, John's probably the best one to answer this. We do on these swales, even though we have 14-foot, that's not a hard, fast number. We can adjust that as needed, correct?
Well, we're, we're going to allow, the answer to that question is really dependent upon how the hydraulic calculations. So can they squeeze down? Can they adjust around trees and those kind of things? In this particular instance, they can because this is town-funded and, you know, and the adjustments can be made, but we also want to rely on our engineers to make sure that we are, you know, hydraulically and engineering-wise doing the right thing. And I'll just leave it at that for now.
Okay, and the, the new outfall pipe that connects to the pipe going down First Avenue?
Are you talking about the big red one there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that actually ties into, there's actually a manhole that's on the northwest corner of that intersection. So it would literally tie into a structure.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. That looks good to me. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselperson McKinley. Counsel, any further comments? Counselperson Andrew?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselperson Sam. All right. And I heard Andy say he was good, so.
Good, like it.
Robert, do we need, do you want to just a general consensus opinion on this piece for staff?
I believe we have it. And then we'll just move forward into design. I believe the IPO includes design. And if it doesn't, then we will bring that back in November. But I think the IPO that was approved does include the actual design.
That, that's correct, Robert. The IPO does include the design. And we've gone through a couple of options so that this is the one that the town would like to move forward. We'd like a direction of that and just take this to construction plan level for bid and construction.
And then we would hold again, the same public meetings with the residents and the general public once we get the closer to the final design.
Yep, let's do that. And also, just for future reference, if we're, and I appreciate the, the additional tweaking for the presentation tonight, but just let us know when it does differ that way. Because I was looking at the agenda piece and and, and I see here what Counselperson Martini was referencing. So that's just good to know. So everybody's looking at the same thing. And I would appreciate that. Thanks, everybody. All right. So, so I believe you have general consensus on that. So um, so I believe you have general consensus on that and uh, that's something we can move forward with. Uh, and we can uh, well, we'll discuss that further uh. At the next council meeting for official approval. Um, we'll now uh, go to our next project, which is our. Bessie uh, Bessie Storm Basin Plan, um, and K H and staff will present.
Sure, and if I can give permission to share, Robert?
Yeah, Victor just stopped sharing, so it should be okay for you to share.
Okay, so um, the project starts at uh, Main Street and nine. And this uh, these exhibits are very similar to what's in the packet, but we have made a couple of changes since then. Uh, based upon some information that we received from um, from an arborist that provided their opinion. Of uh, certain tree conditions over the pine trees uh, on near the lake. And also addressing the curve at Bessie, but in general, this is very similar to what's in the packet. Uh, and those changes were based upon um, the public meeting that we had last week and some follow up correspondence uh, from residents and and the arborists following that. So with that, I'll begin my 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 presentation and then I'll open it up for questions. Um, so at the beginning of Maine and Oakdale, the existing road is approximately eighteen feet. So we are, the existing road is hatched, so we're matching the existing dirt road width through here. We do jog it slightly in this area to avoid a tree um, circling a road here. And the road uh, similar to uh, Butler Street is going to be pitched towards the north. And we're going to have a swell system that will be up to fourteen feet. Uh, likely, this is the top of the basin, so it won't be as wide as fourteen, but that would be the maximum width. Uh, we have a cross drain that connects here across Oakdale Street to provide positive conveyance and to keep the water moving in the ditch. Now, uh, at our last meeting, there were concerns that were brought up about a lot of runoff coming from Oakdale. And we concur with that, uh, based upon uh, our drainage map and uh, and looking at it. Uh, closely and talking with the town staff, there is a basin three here, approximately one point eight two acres. That does flow down Oakdale Street. And so one of our recommendations would be to extend this project along Oakdale for perhaps the first three lots here. Uh, so what we would do is that we would um, we would look at, uh, we would look at providing swales and and other items needed. In order to capture that runoff along Oakdale and convey it properly. And doing so, we may be able to reduce some of the ditches along here, since we'll have some of the ditches along Oakdale. And also, we can also look at the areas south of Oakdale as well, uh, a couple lots to the south. Everything does generally flow this way, but we can also take a look at that. Uh, now, talking with Robert earlier today, there was a question about whether it's worthwhile to provide a. To provide a stormwater retention system on this parcel if the town were to purchase it. Uh, in our opinion, everything does flow north to south and generally west to east. So this is kind of, um, this would not be an ideal place. Typically, you would want a retention area in the bottom of your basin. Um, not the top of it. So um, we were looking at that and we don't feel that that is something that that is needed, but definitely we can discuss that further. Uh, as we're going along here, our design was to beat minimum standards per Green Book, uh, which is the uh, three foot shoulder. The eighteen foot dirt road width, the six foot shoulder, which will also be used for water, uh, with the water line. And then a fourteen foot swell on one side. Uh, we do understand that this does get close to the property line in here. We have a two foot offset. And there is some flexibility to move this alignment to the south a few feet, so that it's not so close to residents on the north. And that's something that we could accommodate. But basically, uh, we wanted to meet the minimum standards uh, that are defined. And then we were looking at the the path that would impact the least number of trees. And the area to the north is clear, and that's why we chose this side to have the swell. There's already a well graded swell in front of this property, and we would look to utilize that existing swell along this property. As we go around uh, towards East Boulevard, there are oak trees here and here that we wanted to avoid. And so we shifted the alignment to the south. Uh, that does two things. Uh, the shifting does calm traffic because there's a deflection in the alignment as well as saving these trees. There is an impact to an existing twenty four inch oak here. But uh, and Robert can expand on this, but the arborist reported that that tree is not healthy. And Robert, if you want to provide some additional information on that?
Yeah, we forwarded to you uh, early on this afternoon, or actually this morning, uh, we had Enviro come out. Uh, since uh, Eric Wheyer was not uh, available to come out until tomorrow morning to confirm what the uh, initial arborist has said. But um, that tree is in decline and the recommendation was that it would not uh, survive much longer. Um, so we would be looking at removing that tree, uh, and also the pines along uh, East uh, Avenue. And as well as the um, maple that is on the intersection of East and um. Uh, Bessie.
And I will show those pines and that maple as I continue through the alignment. Uh, now, there were uh, some uh, concerns brought up about the safety of this curve and slowing down traffic. So we're, we're looking at a T intersection as you see here. It would be a three way stop condition to calm traffic at East uh, and Eighth. And then here, we have the room for a stormwater retention area on town property, and we would not be impacting any trees. And we could also put a rain garden here as well, uh, for water quality and for beautifications. Now, as we head north on East, there are pine trees that at first we are trying to avoid. And I'm going to skip to the next draw because it has a better view of it. Um, so north is now up, so my drawing is rotated, so north is to the right right now. So north is to the right. Um, there's a row of pine trees that I was trying to preserve, and so I was having a ten foot buffer before I put the swell in. Um, but what 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 we found was that those pine trees are not healthy for the arborist. And then Robert also talked to the residents and they would prefer that the pine trees be removed. What that does is that allowed us to shift the dirt road by ten feet to the east. And we used to impact this China berry tree here, which we no longer impact. So there are no impacts to any trees on the west side of East Boulevard. But with this compact, this uh, with this um, revised concept, which is a little different from what's in your packet. We do impact all the pine trees a- along the road. Now, this swell is eighteen feet because we are increasing the width of East Boulevard from uh, nine to ten feet to eighteen feet. So with that consideration, we would recommend an eighteen foot swell, but it would be a shallow swell. It would be on the park side. It would be solid. And it should be minimally impactful. Um, but that is a deviation from the fourteen, so I wanted to make sure that you guys saw that. Uh, now, as we go through here, um, I did not have time to update this, but Robert and I spoke and John and I spoke today. And we're going to look at putting a T intersection here as well, uh, to calm traffic would also be a three way stop. We'll actually expand our study limits, uh, a block I would call West. So that we look at this area, because I know there's inlet improvements that go into this stormwater retention. But all those inlets are clogged up and that's an area of concern. So we would be extending our study area to the west uh, for about a block. And the next block over is pretty short. Um, this.
Real quick.
Yep.
Oh, no. The uh, the pond, there is vegetation that is on the north of that pond. We'll be removing that vegetation again right now. Uh, it's overgrown. I guess it was planted by somebody a few years ago without the permission of the town. Um, and if we were going to tee that up, that intersection, we're going to have to remove that vegetation for visibility standards. Um, but again, when we go ahead and uh, redo this uh, retention area, we'll be making it into a rain garden. Uh, and that also allows for uh, a lake view from the residents that live on Eighth.
Okay.
Okay. Um, as we proceed uh, east on Eighth, um, we get close, okay?
No, are are we taking questions now or waiting till after the presentation, uh, Mayor?
After the presentation, please.
All right, thank you.
Um, and also, none of the trees here will be disturbed. We're grading everything around the trees. So basically, we're just going to scrape this out and clean it because it's gotten sediment buildup over time. But the only trees that are impacted thus far are the pine trees and the oak tree that we previously discussed it, which in the arborist's opinions is poor health. None of this will be impacted, even though we the, we show a proposed grading contour.
And how, uh, can you explain how we're going to interconnect the looped uh, water system from that point over to um. Eighth and Bessie?
Sure. So once you get to Eighth and Bessie, and I think I can, let me, I'll I'll cover that at the end, because I want to show the constraints on Eighth. But I'll definitely go over that. So as we're going down Eighth, this is where you have those inlets that aren't working properly. So we're proposing a brand new curb line, a brand new inlet system. And the reason why we need that curb line is because we're really close to the lake at this point. And we can't excavate any closer to the lake to provide for swells. So we're going to design a a curving system with the dirt road, which will have to be maintained, the inlets and whatnot. But they're going to be piped to this uh, this retention area here that will overtop at certain storm events after the water quality has been. Um, after we've adjusted the water quality, then it will go into the lake. Um, the real pinch point and the real re- the the reason how what really dictates the alignment is this corner right here. And this, this was very difficult to navigate with constraints on both sides. And so I'm going to zoom in. I'm going to spend a little bit extra time on this area. Um, the existing road is hatched here. The dash line, as you see, is the existing edge of dirt road. And it is actually a portion of it, a few feet is actually on private property as it is today. And then, so that is one constraint, which is this uh, right of way line right here. The second constraint is there that there's a thirty four inch and I believe a twenty nine inch oak right here and here as you turn the corner. So our challenge was to be able to provide a safe design that basically threads the needle between the two. Um, so what we did was we had to come in and really look at this area. And we actually had to put in a compound curve. So you see a seventy foot five, seventy five foot radius here. And a hundred and fifty foot radius here. We had to fit in a compound curve in order to squeeze by here and to squeeze by here. Now, when we did that, an eighteen foot uh, dirt road was right on the property line. And so with that, we looked at the option of just for this one isolate area, reducing the width to sixteen. In order to provide a two foot grass shoulder before we get to the property line. So basically, would be eighteen feet coming into the curve, sixteen feet at the point of constraint, and eighteen feet coming out of the curve.
And just so I can um, get to that point too, everybody was asking, why did you include the uh, FEMA contract for. Uh, Butler and Six in the agenda pack? And the reason for that is, again, we are still waiting for FEMA to finalize the contract to send to us. But the language is pretty much boilerplate. Um, and what it does allow for is us for, to ask for variances based on hardships. And this is one of those areas that we would ask for variance and hardship based on, um, you know, the the constraints that we have right there. Um, between, you know, the um, the home, the right of way and the lake.
Thank you, Robert. And this is the fifteen inch maple. Um, the we, we, we did our best, but we just could not avoid that one. And speaking with the resident across the street, he was in favor of that. And the arborist as well was talking about that tree is in decline, Robert.
Yes, that tree is in decline as well. And again, we're going to finalize that, uh, arborist report. We did share it with the tree board and we did share it with the town council. And that's not to say that we will not be doing replanting along this corridor. Uh, we have talked to uh, the tree board and we did talk to the residents along this corridor as well, uh, about replanting oaks, cypress. Um, stuff that's more amenable to this area and will actually um, you know, beautify the entire uh, Bessie area.
Um, the curb and gutter ends right here, and after this, we have to go with an open swell system. Now, uh, this property owner had complained of um, flooding uh, from flooding onto his lot. Uh, he is in the low point, so uh, we would recommend putting a swell here. The width will likely be about fourteen feet, and we did our best to avoid trees. We jogged the swell right here. Um, but when it came to these two here, these could, you know, could potentially be impacted by the swells. The arborist hasn't had a chance to look at these yet, but that's something that's on the to do list. And they do overhang on the roadway, so that's also a little bit of a safety concern. But I just wanted to let you know that these two trees could possibly be impacted as well.
Yeah, i- if you go on a side visit out there, those are the trees that the UPS, the. Arborist trucks are hitting on a constant basis. They actually just. Pretty much go right over the roadway and they're pretty low. And there's probably whole branches that we're going to have to cut. If we were to save those trees.
The other one, the ones that are actually uh, taken out of the the swell, the ones that if you go farther, uh, I guess, north in this case. Those are the two that hang over, not the other, just to be clear, sorry.
So.
These are the ones.
Which ones?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that those are the ones. We, when we looked over and looked at that property, we saw that those are the ones in front of, not Nelson's house, or Martin's house, but um, the the house beyond that one. So that's where the the trucks are hitting. The other two are more smaller.
Okay, I apologize. I I went out there the other day. If I'm sorry, if I misspoke. So these are the ones, the ones that are hanging, overhang, okay?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's it.
But these are also the larger ones. These are the smaller ones, correct?
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
And we are trying to save these larger ones. Um, what we're doing is because this is kind of the top of the basin, we're grading a fourteen foot swell here. Or something, you know, maybe a little bit less than that. But we looked at it and we didn't need to interconnect the swells. This is sufficient to retain the runoff from this area. And by not having to run a pipe across here, we're saving those two trees right there. Um, so the end of our project is Seventh Avenue. Um, now, as far as the water line is concerned, uh, the water line would run within the six foot, um, the six foot uh, shoulder on the east side. And then at this point, there's a lot of right of way and a lot of room to run the water line, so it could go anywhere in this area. It would likely go behind these trees in an in an envelope where it would not impact the tree roots. And it could run along here as well. And then I envision it, I envision it either running, I envision maybe running this way. As probably the path of least resistance of winning trees and then coming back to the shoulder here. And from this point on, uh, it would run in that shoulder line uh, as you go around here. And then it would cross to this shoulder. And head over to uh, Main Street so that you can loop the system. So that would be a a route to consider uh, for the wa- proposed water main.
And we will sub them out to the property or to the right of way line, so the property owners can extend to that where the Orange County would go ahead and set the meters back. Um, and we would be placing fire hydrants every five hundred feet for far flow protection.
Okay. Um, and and with that, that concludes my presentation for this uh, project, and we can open up for comment or questions. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Um, we have several folks who did sign up, I know, to speak um. On this particular item. I think we'll be, go ahead and begin uh, with uh, Mr. Bordeaux.
Do you have uh, the Ninth Avenue? Uh, part up now, right now, in Oakdale?
Yes.
Okay, uh, my only issue with this, and I appreciate Robertson's intent and the uh, Kimberly Horn's intent to. Try to minimize the impact of trees and people's, you know, yards and except, but you're making a ten, nine to ten foot road and eighteen foot road. Wide right away. You're making a two lane highway, dirt highway through a neighbor, a neighborhood that significantly changes the character of that neighborhood. And I'm going to tell you another, you have, you're in receipt of my email and how I feel about. And I'm going to tell you another, you have, you're in receipt of my email and how I feel about the existing structure there. But you have another unintended effect. You're pitting neighbor against neighbor here. You've got Brandy all of a sudden having swales on her side of the road that were on the other side of the road previously, that were never taken care of or maintained, and that solved any problems we have with washouts in my street. There's nobody on my street that's getting flooded. This isn't like First and Forest, or even First and Oakdale, or even Seven, or even down by Fernwood Park. We don't have this issue of anybody getting flood out. The only negative issue we have is you're running water down Debbie and my driveway. And that's just because of that bump in the middle of the road that doesn't belong there. But taking a nine-to-10-foot road and making it an 18-foot road is going to run traffic down our way. I don't care how many three-way stops you put in. I don't care how you curve the road. And you're also pitting, Debbie Srogan's has lived across the street from me for 30 years. We are the best of friends. I've been here 40 years. You're shifting that road into her yard and cutting out a big portion of her landscape, although you're saying you're just taking one tree. But I'm wondering if you're calling legume, trees or bushes. It's a significant part of her property, grass and landscaping that's going to come out, so you can save my trees. I don't like being pitted against her and having to take a position that either negatively impacts her and positively impacts me, or vice versa. And I know that, I said, that's an unintended consequence, but that's what you're doing. We do not want an 18-foot right-of-way coming down our street. I don't know how you fix that. I mean, I noticed on First and Forest, they are not changing their right-of-way because you're not taking federal money, so they still keep their little nine, 10-foot road. But you're going to cram an 18-foot road down our throats, and I just, there's got to be another other way. And that's all, that's what I have to say about it.
Thank you, Mr. Bordeaux. Appreciate that. Nancy Bordeaux.
Oh, I don't have anything to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And Ms. Grimes wanted to speak as well. I know that you guys are, are three of you together?
Yes, yes. No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next up is Brandy Haynes, 835 Oakdale Street.
My husband and I'd like to hear what the council has to say before we add our comments. Is that possible? Because, I mean, we just keep getting surprised. We just keep getting surprised. We're told one thing, something else shows up on the map. It's not on the agenda. Now you're talking about two giant swales in front of my property. You guys went to extreme lengths everywhere else to avoid adverse impacts to neighbors except us. I, this is just absolutely absurd. Nobody wants it. The existing swales, if they were fixed, would fix the problem. We've been, you've been told for three years what's going on, so we'd like to hear what council has to say.
Thank you, Brandy. Mrs. Susan Carter, please, 106 Palm Street.
At this point, I mean, I'm aware of what needs to happen. I had a question about, we were talking about Bessie and Seventh. And I know the impact of those trees, where the road wraps around, just looking at potentially if they are getting hit by trucks and things, pruning those. I have looked at the pine trees. I do agree with what was said about the pine trees as far as their health. And the oak that's on the corner of, is that Eighth and East? One other question is just as far as replanting comes back, because obviously that's going to be a priority for tree board. And within a, I guess, healthy, in a healthy manner. But I have a question about as far as where these swales go. Is there any ability to plant in those, or is that going to be absolutely prohibited or in the future? Like, on an edge of it, I mean, is it, I understand it makes it difficult for mowing. I just want to understand, I guess, as far as when we come back and plant, so we can kind of have an idea of spacing.
All right, let me see if I can get a little clarification on that from the engineers. Can you do any planting in these swales?
On the edge.
Or right on the edge, depending what you plant, I guess I would add?
I don't want to speak for the engineer of record on the plan, but I'm assuming that, you know, we can certainly look at planting at the upper ends. You know, as you got the invert of the swell that comes down, but at the toe, at the top, I'm sure we could plant linear, you know, oaks and that kind of thing outside the limits of swell. And actually, it would be good for the swell because as root systems grow into the swell, and it helps with, you know, some level of, you know, cleanliness to the water treatment and all the other stuff. So, but I'd like, how, tell you what you can do within the 14 feet, but certainly on the outskirts in the limits.
That's good. Okay, that's all, that's really kind of what I wanted to understand, is make sure it doesn't have to be clear for, you know, 20 feet, something like that, before something's planted. So that's...
Right, the top of, the top of the bank, as long as it's not inside the swell. If you're past the top of bank of swell, you can, the town can plant whatever they like at their discretion.
Okay.
And that would be encouraged, you know, Susan, for sure.
Great.
As we come back and look at these things, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Nora Carter, I'm sorry, Nora Brophy.
Yeah, my question is more general for Kim Lee Horn. How many projects like this involving dirt roads have you guys done?
Around central Florida, there are not that many. We've done some work up in Ocala and some work in Marion County. Those areas more, and those would be more like agricultural-type uses. We've done some box culvert replacements on dirt roads. But, you know, typically the central Florida area, there's not that many dirt road projects. But in other areas, we've worked on dirt roads.
So, no projects like ours?
There are not very many areas with, I would say, medium-density residential with dirt roads. So you do have a unique situation. Like I said, a lot of the dirt road projects I work on are more agricultural, where it's a couple acres per parcel. Or, you know, it's agricultural usage. So yes, you have a unique situation.
So are all the, all the projects on this list, Bessie to Seventh, East to Eighth, Ninth and Oakdale, Forest Street, are those all under the grant?
Yes, they are, ma'am.
So, it just seems like you want to tear up a lot of the town, and we don't have any experience with, and you don't have any experience with whether or not this is actually going to solve our stormwater issue.
So, I am not trying to do anything or persuade you one way or the other. I've been provided with direction to design a roadway, dirt road, and drainage conveyance system that meets standards. The fact that you have a denser collection of homes doesn't really change drainage hydraulics or engineering design. We do quantify how much impervious area versus pervious area that you have. So that just means that you actually would need a little bit larger swells because you have more impervious than a typical dirt road that only has one house per five or 10 acres. So from an engineering standpoint, this works. We have designed it. It does require maintenance, and we've said that from the very beginning. If the town would like to keep dirt roads, which has been our direction, is that that does require more intense maintenance than if it were paved. And the criteria that you see in front of you is meeting Florida Green Book standards for the dirt road design in the shoulder, and then we're meeting FEMA's requirement for the drainage design.
I was, I was just asking about your experience because, you know, when I have surgery, I like to know the doctor has replaced more than one knee.
Yeah, and I've been told I look young, but I'm actually 43. So I've been doing this for 21 years for the same company. Professional engineer for 17 of those years. Try to grow more gray hairs. I just don't have them yet.
I didn't, I didn't mean your experience personally. I meant Kim Lee Horn's. So, thank you.
No problem.
Hang out with us here. You won't have any hair.
Mayor, I believe the next person to speak was Simon.
Who is the next person? I'm sorry.
Simon.
Simon, go ahead, sir.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. How you doing today?
Good. How are you?
Good, good. So my name is Simon. I own 812 East Boulevard and 820 East Boulevard. And I'm a licensed residential real estate broker. A lot of you know me, a lot of you don't. I just want to be sympathetic towards my neighbors as well. I understand the engineering behind it. I understand the town's improvement behind it. But we really have to talk to the people that live on the streets that are affected by it. And I can tell you, and I appreciate Robert coming and walking and explaining that he can move the road towards the lake and remove the pine trees. I appreciate all that. But at the end of the day, a lot of my neighbors, the closer the road gets to their properties, they're going to lose market value. You know, their properties will decrease, their landscaping will be removed, or their foreseeable landscaping. It'll affect their drainage fields, septic systems, irrigation, relocating mailboxes. It's going to affect a lot of things. Also, perhaps widening the roads and making it larger is going to bring more traffic. I can tell you, living in front of Bessie, I do get a lot of people that park their cars in the front, and they sit on the bench, and I have to tell them to please move. It's a public road. So, you know, I understand that's going to help with the drainage and everything in the town, but it'll create more traffic, more parking on the side of the road, speeding. And at the same time, we really have to consider our neighbors, you know. And I understand if the road gets closer to the lake, it'll benefit me. But at the same time, I would like all my neighbors to be okay with it. I think it's important that we consider them and maybe have a vote, you know, that if they approve this or not. And at the end of the day, I definitely want to help with the market values in the neighborhood. And, you know, like I said, bringing the road closer to the house does not help the market values. You take that property away from the neighbors. So I just wanted to say that, and I do appreciate the town council and Robert, and also the engineers for all the work they put in. And I'd like to hear more discussion on this, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Simon. I believe the next individual for comment is Teresa Myers.
I just did a little bit of quick math, just looking at the trees that are coming out along here for the 15-inch maple. And I'm getting these studies off of the Tree Benefits Calculator, which is the National Tree Benefits Calculator at treebenefits.com. The 15-inch maple that you want to take out handles 4,010 gallons of stormwater per year. The 10 long-leaf pines that you guys are taking out, if they're 20 inches diameter, each one of those pines will handle 4,473 gallons of stormwater runoff annually. Times 10, that's 44,730 gallons of stormwater mitigation that those trees are handling. So every tree that you're talking about taking out and putting in a berm and a swell, it doesn't even make good sense to me. You've already got an engineering device taking care of stormwater. Why would you take biological engineering devices that handle stormwater mitigation and protect the chain of lakes, and then put in a system that doesn't contain trees, and you're putting in grass inside? It does not make good logical scientific sense. I would like to know if you guys have even done a tree survey of all the trees that you intend upon impacting or taking out, and how much stormwater those trees are going to, you know, how much stormwater impact that's going to have for all the trees that are coming out. I think these are good, critical-thinking questions that you need to be asking as engineers. You need to put on your biology hat for just a minute there and think about all the stormwater mitigation that these trees are already handling, that you would be removing by removing these trees or taking them down because they're quote-unquote unhealthy. I find it very interesting that every one of these trees is unhealthy. That's my comment. Again, my name is Teresa Schretzman Myers, 2713 Triumph Place, Windermere, Florida.
Thank you, Ms. Myers.
Mayor, we did have, we did have a certified arborist to take a look at initially. And then when, again, we do utilize the tree board's recommended arborists, they'll be out there tomorrow. And again, to Teresa Myers's point, is that any tree that is removed, which the ones that we have shown are either in decline or dying, the tree board does plan to replant along that same corridor. So I think that that benefit of, you know, whatever water quality or water retention those trees, they're existing out there, would be better suited by new plantings like cypress or the oaks.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate that. Any further public comment on this particular agenda item? All right, seeing none, we will open it up for council discussion.
Sorry, Mayor, we do have Joe that's on there that has his hand raised.
Sorry, Joe, go ahead.
No worries. Thank you, Mayor and Town Council. I just wanted to be on the record, sort of saying I'm opposed to this. And certainly concerned being, I think, probably the resident that is most impacted by the proximity of the road. Matter of fact, it's on the property now. There are safety concerns now with Bessie and Eighth, and, you know, there's, you know, I like the fact that there was a compound curve put in there. Don't think that's going to mitigate any speed issues. And I don't think that even shrinking it down to 16 feet in that area is going to protect the trees, the live oaks that are across the street from mine adequately. Of course, the root structure of those, I think, will be heavily impacted, and that's going to be a tragedy to me. I'd like to say if this project does go forward, that we would consider, there were one way. And I know that's something that's, you're not going to take lightly, but considering a one-way road, a street here between potentially where Eighth and East meet all the way to Bessie and Seventh, that way would narrow that, the impact to my property and the oak trees and the lake. You know, bringing that down to nine feet from 18 feet, or, you know, propose 16 feet. So that would be one proposal. I've been an advocate for, you know, even turfing. And I know that's probably not popular, but, you know, what has been done to East, I know there's a lot of precedent, or not a lot of precedent for that, but, you know, turfing from Seventh to, you know, down to where East and Best, I'm sorry, East and Eighth meet again, would provide a lot of, I would assume, natural drainage, and, you know, would certainly reduce any impact to, you know, you wouldn't have to be piping, you wouldn't do all sorts of things. So I just wanted to make sure that those were on the record. Also, on the end of next week, I'm putting a proper fence on my property line. And I'm actually concerned about the impact to the road itself because I will be putting a fence in the road as it exists today. So I wanted to understand how that would impact the town if I went and continue that project.
Thank you. Joe, could you give your address for the record, sir, and your last name?
Sorry, yep, Joe Tenzar, 327 East Eighth Avenue.
Okay, and will you get with town staff to work through the fence challenger to make sure that that gets resolved?
Yeah, I'll work it, Joe.
Perfect. Thank you, guys. I appreciate that. Any further public comment?
I have my hand up.
Okay, go ahead.
This is Nassir Madhani. I own property on East. I would like to appreciate what you guys have done, the amount of work that you have done and effort put in behind this. Just wonder whether there is actually any need to expand the road. Simon has already mentioned, and so has Bill Bardot, about his objections, and I would go along strongly with it. And I would want to be on record to be against the idea of expanding the road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further comment? I cannot see the hands up, guys, so if there are any hands up, can you check, Robert?
Yeah, I'm trying to lower some hands that were previously... Bill is raising his hand, but again, I would have to check with Dorothy to see how much time he still has. Sorry, Bill. Got to play by the rules, man.
Nancy can speak, though.
Yeah, Bill, do you have a quick comment, brother? If he's got something quick, let's let him go real quick, and let's hear what he has to say. Bill, you're on mute, though, brother.
Okay, yeah, I just want to second Joe's about the one-way. If you're one, I don't care which way I turn out of my driveway. If that nine-foot one-way road resolves this, I'd be all for it.
Thank you, sir. Any additional hands up?
No, sir. The only remaining person you have is Brandy, and I believe she wanted to wait till after council discussion. But it is again up to you.
All right. Let's go ahead with council discussion, then. Council interested in your thoughts, comments, and observations.
Do we?
Who's going to kick us off? Mr. Williams?
Right off the bat, do we have an idea of what the total cost of this project is going to be? I mean, a rough number. $300,000, $400,000? I mean, a rough number. $300,000, $400,000, $150,000?
For this grant project, we have $1.2 million.
1.2, just to do this, the bottom basin. Okay.
Yeah. And we would include, again, those improvements that we discussed to Oakdale, North Oakdale and Ninth, and then South Oakdale and Ninth, and also improvements from Eighth to Magnolia.
Okay.
Councilperson Williams, any additional comments? I see a think in there.
I, that's my, you know, my initial is, you know, let's put everything in perspective. You know, we're always, there's a lot of argument out there saying that the grant money drives these projects. And I don't want to believe that. But I also got to look at what's, what's the total cost of these projects to get these things done. We know there is need. I am not in favor of widening the road. I've said that before. I wish we could come up with some alternatives other than widening the roads and this thing costing $1.2 million. I'm at a loss right this second when you said 12. Some under that, I was gonna definitely argue a little bit more. That's all I have right this second. Let me think.
We'll come back to you. Council, any further comments? I see Councilperson Martini with his hand up.
Robert, is that, is that the total cost, the 1.2 million? Or is that the, we have a 75%, 25% federal cost share on these projects?
Yeah, the total amount of the grant award is a total of 1.2. So we'd have to put in probably about 25%.
So we would be responsible for $300,000?
Better on that.
Okay. So it's just, you know, just so everybody's aware that it's not, the whole thing's not getting paid for. And this is a cost reimbursement where we would have to, I guess, in stages where it's paid for and then we get reimbursed. Is there an option for a one-way? And if so, is it really nine feet? Or do we have to adhere to the 15-foot minimum for emergency vehicles?
I would defer to how, but I believe that if we meet the nine-foot standard, I think that's sufficient. But that question is for how?
Orange County Mini Code, I believe, requires 15 feet for emergency vehicles for one-way streets. To be honest, I haven't looked at the Windermere code to see if you guys have a criteria. As an engineer, I would be reluctant to sign off on a nine-foot road for emergency access. If ever gets blocked, I wouldn't want to be liable for that. So that would be something that the town would, would have to consider. If you don't have a code specific to one-lane road, I'd have to defer to kind of the nearest government criteria that I have. And that would be the Orange County Codebook, which would be, I believe, from memory, roughly 15 feet for a one-lane road.
Yeah, I remember that being talked about before as the actual minimum. I think, I think that the gist of this is that, you know, we're trying to come up with a plan that the engineers can sign off on, that we can use the grant money for. And would be the minimum standard. So that we can use that money to improve these roads and solve these traffic or these drainage problems that we otherwise wouldn't be able to because we don't have the funding. But, you know, if we're going to have to come up with $300,000, I have people asking me, well, what can we do with $300,000? To fix the situations that we've got in that area without widening the roads and taking away the charm and character of the neighborhood. I have not talked to a single person who's in favor of this particular project, the way it's presented. And I've spoken to a number of residents who were not informed or did not get door hangers. That would be directly impacted by this. Or, you know, we're just, well, there's people that I talked to who didn't get door hangers. And, you know, they're very close to this project. So, you know, when we do a variance or something of that nature, people within 500 feet of whatever we're talking about get informed. But, you know, I met two residents two days ago who didn't know anything about it. And they live 50 feet from the terminus of this at Seventh and Bessie. So I think, I think we need to try to come up with a better solution that at least one of the residents will buy into. Because I've not met one that, that, that would agree to this if it was up to them. So I think we got to sharpen the pencil, so to speak, and see if we can, you know, find a better compromise or alternatives. Or I don't certainly don't want to send the grant money back because I know how difficult it is to get it. But, you know, we're at a turning point with our town and the Public Works Department, as you all know. And, you know, a lot of this stuff is being addressed now and talked about because what we have in place, what we've had in place for the last 90 years, is not being maintained or kept up to standards. And so every person I talked to said, why aren't we doing that first? Put the emergency brake on this and see if that makes a difference before we set precedence that we can't undo. And that's just what I'm hearing from the residents. So that's my piece.
Thank you, Councilperson Martini. I see Councilperson McKinley with his finger up. The appropriate, the proper finger, I wanted for the record.
I was very careful with that. It's the index finger. I have a couple of questions on the design as it's presented. Coming down Bessie, and then along Eighth, and then along East Boulevard, you've got the six-foot utilities, but on the side opposite where the houses are. So that means that everyone that hooks on to the county water, they're going to have to tunnel under the road or dig the road up or whatever to connect. Whereas if it was on the other side, it would make more sense. If you could, please go back to the intersection of Oakdale and Ninth.
Councilman McKinley, if you correct your statement, we would sub it out to the right-of-way line. So we would do that during construction. The purpose of putting the water utility on the east side along East Avenue was to limit the amount of impacts to the property under to the west.
Okay. All right. The, on this intersection here, how, when you had showed it before, you showed a pipe going across Oakdale?
Yes.
Okay. Are we vacating the existing pipe that runs diagonally across?
Yes, we were planning to.
Okay. We have a current water control area along the south side of Ninth Avenue between Oakdale and the east. There's no consideration given to reclaiming that?
There was consideration, but there were also a lot of trees on that side. And that swell is, is not, not really there anymore as significantly as it should be. So we could go on the south side, but it would just be impactful to more trees through here if we were to grade it to meet current standards.
Okay. And if you would go down to where Ninth meets East? Thank you. And here we have one house that comes in on East, on the south end of East Avenue. We have one house that exits that right there. No other traffic goes on that. But we're going to put in a three-way stop. You can't, somebody really can't be serious on this. To the best of my knowledge, we have never had an accident at that location with a nine-foot road. Now we're going to put in a three-way stop. It just, to me, it makes zero sense. The same up at Eighth and East. Where we want to put in a three-way stop, and you call it a traffic calming device. My understanding was a stop sign was a traffic control device, not a traffic, not to be used as a traffic calming. Bottom line on this thing is, and I have to confess, I was in full support of going out for grants to get work done. However, I wasn't told, and I don't think anyone else on council was told, there'd be strings attached. And the strange was that we were going to give up our dirt roads. We were going to narrow, we were going to widen the dirt roads to 18-foot. I didn't know that. I wish I had, because then I would have fought it from square one. If we want to take, hand out money from the government and destroy the charm of Windermere, which is the narrow dirt roads, increase cut-through traffic that now has no reason to slow down, then I just cannot put my seal of approval on. No one, as Councilman Martini said, I haven't found anyone along there that likes this idea. I haven't found anyone along any of the project areas that like the idea of going to 18-foot roads. I had, we've had one over at Seventh and Butler that said they wanted to project. Other than that, everybody is opposed to it. We're here to represent the people of this town. And if taking $1.2 million or however much it is comes with taking away what has been Windermere and people moving here because of the dirt roads, I've had numerous people tell me that. I moved here because of the quaintness of Windermere, the dirt roads. I love to go walking on those roads. My wife walks them almost every day. And she complains about people speeding on narrow roads. And now we're going to double it on a nine-foot to 18-foot? No, I just cannot support any portion of this plan. I will repeat what I said when we were talking about Butler and Seventh. Stop. Back up. Let's reevaluate what we have, identify those problem areas, and then fix those problem areas. I know we have flooding in some areas, then let's fix that. I don't think going to 18-foot wide roads, and this is a requirement for one reason. One reason only, because it's a federal grant. They're going to give us money, and then we're going to have to dance to their drummer. And I don't like it. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilperson Martini, or McKinley, sorry. Any further comment from council?
Well, Mayor, real quick, the reason that we did the T intersection over at Ninth and East, again, was based on the comments that we received from the neighbors about people whipping around that corner and speeding. So we felt that, you know, again, with the teeing of the intersection, number one, it would cut down, cut through traffic, and then, you know, reduce the people whipping around that corner. And the same goes for Eighth and East. And then relative to the comments about the 18-foot dirt roadway in other areas with the Butler and Sixth project, again, the 18-feet is pretty much standard already there. And this is pretty much the one location where it's nine feet going to 18 feet with the minimal Orange County standard of 15 feet. Now, we're more than happy to create a concept or maintain a certain dirt roadway, but we're going to need some direction from council of what, you know, you want a dirt roadway, but then we need to see some guidance as far as, okay, if we're going to go forward, what do those dirt roadways look like? Because right now, we're just at an impasse to where we're trying to figure out how to get you what you want without, you know, with doing stuff as minimally as possible.
Thank you, Robert. Robert, what I'll try to do, hang on, Councilman. What I'll try to do is we'll try to hear from everybody. And then we'll try to see if there's some common ground there in terms of standards that we can discuss. Or, you know, if we just get, you know, back from council that they want to go a different way altogether. So I will try to build some consensus towards the end here. I just want to make sure that we hear from everybody. Councilman McKinley, did you have an additional comment, sir?
Yes, I did. I think the residents of this town have made it pretty clear what they want. They want the dirt roads to remain the same size they are right now. I think we have stormwater issues that we need to address. And I think that we keep talking about minimum standards, minimum standards, we can set our own standards here in this town. Yes, we open ourselves up to liability. But in 100-plus years, how many times have we been sued because of the narrowness of our roads? I don't know of any. The road over in front of the old schoolhouse is far from being 20-foot wide. Yet the fire trucks go down there every time there's a problem that they have to go. And also for training at Fernwood Park, they travel down that road. So I think the standard that I'm looking for, and that most of the residents that I've talked to is looking for, is leave the roads alone. If we need to regrade or install some sort of a stormwater system, then let's take a look at that. But we need to look at it without these grants, because these grants force things on us that nobody, none of the residents that I've spoken to that are impacted by this really want. So, all right.
I'd like to, thank you, Councilperson McKinley. I would like to go on the record as stating, though, first responders will go anywhere they can possibly go without getting stuck or stopped. But I think that, I want to be clear that a nine-foot road for any fire apparatus is not appropriate. It doesn't mean that you're going to change it today. I'm just saying, I want to say for the record that that is not, that's not the proper way to go. All right, Councilperson Andrew.
It really isn't, Mayor, and I agree with you. But I drove one for three years. And I went down nine-foot roads easily.
Hey, I have no doubt. And that's what I'm saying. I know they'll go anywhere. I know they'll go anywhere. I'm agreeing with you there.
And we've never had a problem of, as yet, that I'm aware of, where they couldn't traverse our roads.
This is true to my knowledge as well. But seconds matter, and that will definitely slow you down a little bit. Okay. Councilperson Andrew.
Okay. I could keep you all here until midnight because this is what I wrote up that I was going to read to you with all my questions. I'm going to try to be benevolent. So what I'd like to say is, I feel like, I feel like I have had a big learning process here in that at the beginning of all of this, and well before we started looking at these projects, I know that I was a part of the conversation and the encouragement for us to find standards and to find outside money to do things to help serve our town in managing stormwater projects. And that's because, I guess, I didn't know what I didn't know. And I didn't know that it was going to come with some of the requirements that were being held to. And I didn't know what exactly, you know, typical sections and things like that would impose, that being the road widening. So to that extent, you know, I don't know that an apology is really the way that I'm going. But I'm just saying that I, that I admit that I did take some, I take some responsibility in asking our town staff to go down this road. So that said, a lot of my questions, I have tried for, it seems forever at this point, to figure out any, any question I can ask, any stone we have left unturned, anything that we can do, because I realize that money is a huge constraint here. But we do have some responsibilities in managing our stormwater and protecting our lakes, making sure that our neighbors don't get flooded and that they don't have water running down their property and things like that. But, you know, the character of the town does matter. And so, so some of the things that I've asked Robert that are on this long list of questions, I don't think that I'm going to go through tonight. I wanted to have answers to them provided to everyone in the audience so that people could have things they may have already heard before emphasized, such as, you know, what do we do? What happens if we don't do anything? And then those kinds of questions. But I'm not going to go through those. What I'm more curious about are some things that we haven't really talked about here that we might consider otherwise. And one of those options is, we hear from a lot of neighbors about not doing a big plan like this. And can we do kind of a surgical approach where we do patchwork solutions here and here? And can we do kind of a surgical approach where we do patchwork solutions here and here and here? And we understand that that's not a holistic approach to it, but. We have a lot of expertise within the town, people who are engineers, you know, couldn't we use them, put together a task force? They can decide on some things that we can do here and there, and then provide Public Works that direction, and Public Works could just maintain those things. And maybe we just have somebody on Public Works who is completely responsible for stormwater management issues and for going out to. Grade the roads or do those kinds of things. And so, just so everyone can hear. Is that a possibility? Can we do it? What are the risks? What would that look like? That's a real general question, but it's something I hear again and again and again from all of our residences. Why can't we? We had this person who did it this way. We had, you know, somebody else who came out here and looked at this. You know, I know that we have somebody in town who's willing to do it. People say all the time that they walk down the roads and they could fix this for us real easily. So. So what happens if we decide to go a route like that? Could we even do it?
No, I'll refer to you, Mayor.
I, so the, let me just speak in generalities, right? So. There, there are big challenges with individually and without engineering maintaining stormwater. Because your water goes somewhere. We all know this, right? And I think we all agree on at least that one concept. So basically what happens is you're pushing water somewhere else, and that person may or may not like that or approve of that. We have had instances in the past where we've been exposed to significant liability. Based on unengineered stormwater improvements. So if you don't do the surveying, if you don't do the improvements, if you don't do the engineering and you don't have the sign off. And I'll let the engineer speak to this and, and John and Robert can speak to it as well. You, you do incur the potential for significant risk. One of the higher risk elements to. Municipalities is, is water. There's a big, there are big challenges with. With putting water on other people's property, even if it's not intentional. So that's, that's what I would comment to that. I'm not saying it can't be done at all, but I am certainly saying that it is not without risk and quite a bit of risk, actually. It's why we tend not to. To do that wherever possible. So I don't know if anyone else would like to comment on that from, from staff or the engineers or John. But that's, that's my personal experience.
Yeah, Jim, let me, let me just preface this because I've been working on stormwater projects in this town for the last fifteen years. And have lived here for twenty years and I've watched our town grow. And grow in a good way, but also grow in a responsible way. But one of the things that's happened over the last five to ten years. Is we've had small houses on large lots grow to large houses on small lots. And quite frankly, the lot size hasn't changed. What's changed is the house. And, and that's good, because that's increased our values. It's increased our property values and everything else. But what it's done at, in our town has changed a lot of the impervious ratios. So what we experienced twenty years ago, when we had Elmer grading the roads to where we are today. Is way different. And so if we, as council members, staff, engineers and everything. Want to be responsible to protect our lakes, we have to be responsible in the way we do it. We've set a precedent in this town, and I agree with it. I live in this town. I love the dirt roads. It's the one reason why I came here. After I live on it in the dust and everything else, don't like it when it's dusty, don't like it when it's wet, never washed my truck. You know, but, but it's the charm in which we came to know this town. We're, we're at a point in which we have town staff, town council. And engineers in place to preserve our lakes. That's the one thing that we want to do. We don't own a lot of percentage of the lakes. But we are probably one of the highest polluters of the lake based on stormwater runoff because of the high turbidity that we send into our lakes. Through the dirt roads. So you guys have, as a council and as staff, come up with plans. Funding and everything else to assess and address these issues. And, you know, kudos to you guys. And it's hard. It's an arduous process. We set a precedent. But yet we all have to agree on what the solution is. And, you know. What I love about this evening is we can have residents, we have town council members, we have engineers. Everybody together to help come up with a solution. That ultimately preserves the value of our properties, preserves the value of our day to day enjoyment of the properties. And also protects our lakes. And this is, this is what the process is all about. And, you know, thank God for all the residents that are speaking up. Thank God for the town council that have to make very, very difficult position, decisions. And thank God for the staff that is open to have these kind of conversations. It's a tough bit of business. But, you know, we are here. We've been very fortunate to be able to go out and get these grants because you guys had the foresight to do that. I'm sure somewhere in the middle, there's a solution and we all have to figure that out. So that, that's kinda, that's kinda where we are. And that's kinda, you know, where I've been over the last twelve years, working with you guys. On a day to day basis to solve these issues.
Thank you. Thanks, John, and thanks, Mayor. You know, I, I have heard quite a bit of all of that before, and I just wanted to. Have that story retold for everyone who's in the audience tonight, because I think that some of these things, you know, the, the perspective needs to be seen. And, and we do need to understand that everyone's working towards this. I am a proponent of us going out to get grant funds. I mean, on our budget, we kind of need that. We need outside funding to self-fund everything, I think, is, is incredibly difficult and it could put off projects for years and years. But, but I don't know that that means that every project that we, we go after, you know, we, we get the funding. We find out that the project just isn't gonna work because of whatever reasons. So some of those might be. That the residents realize that there's a trade off that, that they just, they just can't find to be. Beneficial or, or like I've said before benign, you know, if everyone's opposed, then that makes it really difficult for us to approve regardless of where the money's coming from. The other question that I had earlier raised to Robert separately is. So if we decide to forego grant funds, that leaves us with the possibility that some of these projects might be put off into the future. Which opens us up to more legal liability. And so I'm wondering what our options are for self-funding. And if, if our residents really are as opposed to using grant funding, but, but recognize too that we need to do some of these projects. Is it possible for us to create a municipal services benefit unit, an MSBU, which, which would. Temporarily tax the, the residents who live on dirt roads to pay for some of these dirt road projects. Or stormwater projects in the dirt road area. And that's not gonna be very popular. No one wants to hear that, but the money has to come from somewhere. And I don't know that. Asking the entire town to, to pay the, the burden of that is, is gonna be very palatable to a lot of folks who don't live on dirt roads.
Yes, you would be able to set up a municipal service benefit unit and limit those to people that live on dirt roadways.
Or I suppose maybe people who also want to volunteer. I don't live on dirt roads, but I'd volunteer to pay into it.
You'd have to have, it'd be a nexus between the MSBU and the benefited property. I don't think you can voluntarily. Chip into it.
Okay. And I, I think that's, oh, I, I did want to ask also too, as we look to possibly reorganize public works. If we did have an MSBU or had some way we were self-funding things, could we designate? Money's also not just for the, the project itself, but maybe for a designated individual. Who is in charge of maintenance of the dirt roads, the stormwater projects, maybe training ongoing for that, that individual. Maybe we could even, we keep on talking about we, we are not able to find the outside expertise and experience in maintaining dirt roads. Maybe that just doesn't exist. So perhaps the town of Windermere could, this is, I know pie in the sky, but the town of Windermere could become the expert. We might actually go through some training and have our, have our, our public works team actually. Put in some time to creating, creating that knowledge. It's my other comment on that. That's really a, a question. I think that's just a comment.
No problem.
Okay, that's all I think I have. Thanks.
Sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Councilperson Andrew, and we'll work it out so we can take your money. No problem if we have to. Councilperson Sap, any comments?
I won't have a twenty minute. Speech this time, but. So today I had a conversation with, with staff and, you know, part of the reason that we. You know, we're at, they added on to this plan that was presented to go north and south on Oakdale is. That Oakdale is definitely, you know, a, a problem, you know, for the bottom of the basin. And, you know, the thought process of including that, you know, we don't know if the grant would pay for it or not, or if it'd be self-funded. But hopes would be that we could reduce the swell sizes as we get, you know, further down the basin as we don't have an overload. And of course, it's not fair for, you know, certain residents to take stormwater from everybody up above. You know, something else that we discussed too, and how it. Had touched on it a bit is to create some sort of buffer, whether it be the roadside, you know, three foot shoulder or the. The swale itself. And I don't know what that would look like if it'd be four or six foot, but, you know, we're looking at numbers of forty one to forty seven feet. And have sixty foot total. So with that meandering, of course, you know, there is potentially the opportunity there to create that buffer. Between the properties to give a little bit of arm's length between the road and maybe come up, partner with the. With tree board and come up with some sort of, you know, landscaping. You know, plan on the opposite side of those swales. You know, as for the roadside, you know, we can all agree that, you know, Ninth Avenue east of. Oakdale is unique, is much smaller than a lot of the roads in town. This has been mentioned before. Not just for this project, but when we were discussing cut through traffic and such. And as it keeps coming up, I'm not sure why we keep tabling it, but maybe because of the road size issue that we get serious about. Talking about it being one way in certain areas there. It does make sense from a cut through point of view, and then also how narrow the roads are. In that area. So that's really all I have in addition.
Thank you, Councilperson Sap. We appreciate that. Council, any further comments? I see Councilperson McKinley with, I'm not sure which finger that one is, but we'll take it.
That was, that was the index again.
Okay, just checking, sir.
Just one final point, and, and John, I, I appreciate your, your comments. But the comment was made that we've gone from small houses to large houses. And that affects the impervious. That's true. But we also have codes, and I believe that they're restricted as to how large of a. Area they can make impervious on their property. And they're required to retain their own stormwater up to the first inch. And I, I don't think that's happening on some of the older homes. I think a lot of the water on our roads is actually coming from private property. And it bothers me to have to go out here and fix something that is really an individual property owner's responsibility. They're required to retain that water. We need to take a look at what we can do to get them to retain that water. Before we go spending a lot of money on doing these other things and meeting standards that somebody else has set rather than the town. And the comment was almost so made about the dirt roads and the lakes. I just went through the map of Windermere. We have seven areas that belong to the town where there's possibly. Water going from the roads into the lake. First Avenue. Between Forest and Butler. Third Avenue and Magnolia, Fourth and Magnolia, Fifth and Lake, Bessie Park, Fernwood Park. And on the corner of Pine and Third. The rest of the water that's going into the lake is going in from private property. And I don't know what we can do about the people that no longer have berms in their backyard. I know that my daughter just built. Toward, did a tear down and built a new house on Second Avenue. She has a large retention area in her backyard to capture that, that stormwater. And I think that's something we need to look at before we go destroying these roads. And I'm gonna use the word destroy. Because they've been this way for a long time, and it is a part of the charm of Windermere, and it's why people move here. So I'm sure that we could sit down and come up with a solution. I'm not sure we can reach a solution where we have a grant that's going to require us to meet. Eighteen foot wide roads, fourteen foot swales, six foot on one side and three, three feet on the other. I, I just don't think we can possibly do that. So I am not in favor of moving forward with the. With the grants because of the strings that are attached to it. But that's something we'll have to discuss in a regular council meeting. But that's my two cents on it. Or actually, it's about twenty five cents worth I gave tonight.
Twenty five cents and two index fingers. Councilperson McKinley, I do want to make a, just one point based on your comments that. The, the, the requirement to hold your first inch of stormwater, I believe, came into play about two thousand and six. So those, there, there, there is a, a lot, there, there are a lot of homes. That are not required. That requirement does kick in if there's modifications done or additional, you know. Add-ons, et cetera. So in order to require everyone to hold their first inch of water. We would need to enact a, a, a separate ordinance. To make that happen, just FYI. So that's why some do, some don't. And although I will say some folks have not maintained their. Stormwater and that can, that, that was originally. Put in as part of their CO, that would be a code enforcement situation, just FYI on that entry, you know that. Councilperson Martini, I saw you, you up. Did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did, Mayor. Thank you. And I think, I think that, you know, I've said it before, but I think that's a great idea, is that we maybe change the ordinance. And, you know, get these, these homes that don't have any water retention onboard with the program somehow. You know, can we use any of this grant money for that? It's a rhetorical question, doesn't have to be answered. I just wanna, I had a couple other just minor things. Do we have a, Robert, do we have a timeframe or a time limit on using the grants? I mean, are we able to, and I'm gonna go back to my previous statement. About. Deferred maintenance, for lack of a better term, which has backed us into this corner. Are we able to kind of put the emergency brake on, on these plans and try and see if we can come up with. A solution that meets everybody's. Liking, or do we have to spend this money by a certain timeframe? I know we do on Second Avenue. I'm not sure if anybody else has an issue with Second Avenue. What's happening there? I know that's, I don't. Cause it's, you know, it's necessary. But, you know, some of the things I, I. Understand about Second Avenue, there's not really a, there's already water going through there. And one of my other questions is, the houses in town that already have county water. That are on dirt roads, they don't have a six foot utility easement. So, you know, why is that absolutely necessary? For what we're talking about here?
The six foot is a requirement of Orange County. We're gonna utilize Orange County utilities, their requirement is six foot. But relative to your other question is that we haven't signed this contract yet, because when they first denied us, then we appealed. Because of the capital improvements that were associated with this. But each and every grant has a timeframe for deliverables, because they wanted to see the money spent. In the manner which they want to see it moving forward. So the designs for West Second Avenue and for Butler and Sixth. Are due by December. We're asking for the extension because we are including Orange County utilities. So I'm assuming that we would see a similar, maybe five month, if not less, for us moving forward with design. For this project. And again, in order for us to stay in good graces with. You know, the, the people that provide the money to us, you know. You're gonna want to be open and fair with them to say that we don't know, you know, in this area, what we want to do right now. So it's unfair of us to hold on to this money and not give it back to another. So it's unfair of us to hold on to this money and not give it back to another community that might be in need of it.
I I understand. I realize that, and I know we've also built relationships with the with the grant funding. Company that helped us get this far. So I really would like to find a compromise to make this work. We I think we have two sets of minimum standards. We have. The minimum standard that the town would be able to achieve the same results. On our own as as the minimum standards that are required by the grant. And I think that's the that's the big challenge here. Is that? The minimum standard is twice as big. With the grant money. As, you know, what we could do to fix it ourselves. So it is John's correct. It is a difficult decision. You know, it's. I agonize over these decisions because, you know, I know we have limited funding. But on the other hand. I represents the residents and. Nobody, nobody likes this, not even the people who some of the people who are most. Adversely affected by flooding have told me. We don't need. This plan. We need to, we need to do a few. Relatively minor fixes that will and have corrected their problem. Such as it's Seventh and Butler and also. At Ninth and Oakdale, we put in. Fill dirt, which forced the water into the swale, which forces it into the culvert pipe. And it goes right where it's supposed to, but when it gets the other side of that culvert pipe, it billows out. Into the over the filled in swale that was there, and it just spills down the street. So parts of this, you know, and and Forest Street. We're doing the maintenance on it. There's no flooding. Oakdale and Ninth, we're doing the maintenance, and Tom Fry's house hasn't flooded. So and I've heard that over and over again. Deferred maintenance, I think, like I said, has backed us into this corner. So. One of the other, one of the big issues, I think, we're talking about preserving the lakes and nobody's paying attention. Or even thinking about the mud that goes into Lake Butler at the boat ramp every time it rains. We've kind of put that on the back burner. That really should be our number one. Priority here. While we're considering this other stuff. We have a source for funding for that. But we're not doing anything with it because. To do something there, we might have to take part of it out. Once Fernwood Park, you know, project gets done. Well, who cares? Let's stop that runoff. And then take part of it out if we need to. We just need to. I don't know. I think we have our priorities out of whack here. That's it for me. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may just, this is not just, it's not a rebuttal to anything, but the fact of the matter is, again, when when people see these videos, they 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 make it make it the impression that it's. Staff versus the residents versus town council, and it's not that way. You know, staff was directed to come up with a to maintain their roadways. You know, and come up with concepts to maintain those dirt roadways. So we'll be able to maintain the stormwater. And also, town council came up with a master utility plan to get everybody. Potable water systems. And that's what we are attempting to do, and also trying to make sure that we are able to fund these projects. So that's why we went after these grants to try to get those. So again, the minimum that you're gonna have to see for a concept for a dirt roadway would probably be a three foot shoulder. You'd have to make the decision if you're gonna follow your land development code and only have nine foot. For a dirt roadway, or if you're gonna meet the minimum standards for Orange County and for the fire department or for emergency vehicles of fifteen feet. We just need direction from you of what do you want us to do? Do you want us to meet the? Town's land development code of a nine foot one way? Or meet the minimum standards of the fifteen, but understand you're still gonna have a three foot shoulder. And then a swale system either on both sides or one side. And that's why we came up with the plan of least impact, which was the three foot shoulder, the eighteen foot. Roadway, the six foot for the minimum standards for a utility line and the maximum of fourteen foot swale. We understand that, yes, maintenance has been an issue in the past, but again, we're trying our best to come up with the plan. We're not gonna make everybody happy. We we understand that. But we're trying to come up with plans that, you know, not only. Meet some sort of standard or try to resolve the issues. But it's just hard trying to figure out, okay, what exactly does council want to follow? Do we want to follow a nine foot? Travel lane, whether it's one way, or do we want to meet the fifteen foot? Or are we just going to do it on a case by case basis? And again, we've been directed by councils to to try to do these, and I don't want to, again, make it seem like we're. Adversarial here. We're here to work for you and we're here to listen to you. You know, we try to come up with these plans that not only get us funded, but also take care of the problem. I mean, realizing that there are issues as far as maintenance and we're we're taking care of that of the previous maintenance issues. But as a staff, I mean, we're trying to, again, be stewards of the taxpayer money by going after these grants. And I'm sure that whatever grants that you go after are still gonna have strings attached to it by making sure you meet some sort of standard.
And Robert, if I may, just 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 for information, I looked up the Orange County municipal code. And their minimum width for a one way road is actually seventeen feet. That's just for your information. I'm not saying anything else. That's just for your information. It's seventeen feet is the Orange County standard.
Thank you, sir. So first of all, I want I I want staff to understand that, listen, we we asked you guys to go get the grant funding. I live in a grant funding world, and there are stipulations on just about every grant. Everybody wants a little something. You know. And some standards to what the monies can be utilized for. If you don't have that. Then you you can't guarantee your, you can't guarantee good stewardship of those dollars. And you cannot guarantee that those people who are funding these things, you know, get. Get a reasonable bang for the buck and and something that they can defend having given money for. So. That's kind of a something we all understand and know, I believe. Now, the question is, does it fit what we want to do, where we want to go, and who we want to be? And I think what I what we hear here is is definitely that there's some hesitation there in that area, both from residents and from council. I will be the first one to tell you that I do not have all the answers for these things. I am super reluctant to go with a bunch of pipes and underwater underground. You know, underground methods to transfer this water if we have dirt roads, which we do. I think common sense tells us that those become pretty difficult to maintain. And even though we have had some luck with them in some places, I know that we feel like those are. I think it's our consensus that we feel like those are a little more difficult to to maintain, expensive to maintain. And and a little more challenging. You know, we agreed not to pave the roads, which. Which is not a problem at all. I mean, I totally agree with that conversation. That puts us in these in into the swell situations, which. We find that folks are not particularly pleased with either. So. You know. I don't exactly know. Where we can go from here in terms of of other methods. You know, I mean, that that's where it gets real, really, really challenging. Tree size, your hand up. I I will get back to you, I promise. Give me one second here while I try to. Get a little feedback from from council. So. In order to do that, guys, we need to kind of put our caps on and think about how are we gonna guide staff here? I mean, or, you know, you've you've got a few options, right? We tell them. We tell them, no, thank you. And Robert, I'd like to hear the implications of that in terms of, you know, I know some of them. But I would like to hear the implications of that in terms of any other projects that we have going on in town and and this one. We can. We can go a different direction in terms of how this is engineered. I don't know what leeway that's gonna give us. We we have asked that for the Seventh and Butler project. We may want to. See what that looks like. Again, we'll need to talk about our timeframes and make sure and understand what the. What implications we have there. Week is a third option. I mean, you can just go a completely different way, but I gotta be honest with you. I. I don't know exactly what that is, and I don't know if anyone else. On the engineering team or elsewhere has an alternative methodology. I appreciate that the trees help with water. The challenge we have there is that. Number one, I I am a hundred percent for planting trees. I I have been begging us to plant more trees because I see what's happening with. Some of these older trees, they tend to be fragile now. And that's just like a life cycle thing. So, you know, we do need to spend some time on that. That'll be another discussion for another day. But I think that, you know, in terms of. Controlling rushing water, which is what we have, you know, we have. Downpour water that that moves a lot of sediment and sand in a very quick pace. And causes us our challenge, our challenges with these dirt roads, and they they move and reshape, and you know, they're kind of a living, they're kind of a living thing. And and I think we understand that. So. Number one, let let, Robert, what what happens if we don't want to move forward at all?
With this project, again, then we would have to, you know, instead of taking it from a basin standpoint, try to look at it from a Band-Aid standpoint. On seeing where we can maybe make some corrections. You know, it's hard to say, you know, you have the people living there now that may not. See the washouts as a big issue, but those are the people that are living there now. Also, as far as, you know, flooding onto other people's properties. Unless we have an engineer's stamp of approval. You know. We do have sovereign immunity to some point, but then once we start doing Band-Aids like we did on West Second Avenue. You know, then you're opening yourself up to the possibility of inverse condemnation, trespass nuisance, and then your sovereign immunity is is gone. And then you're you're back to square one where you're gonna have to pay for the design and pay for the. Project itself. So again, we can. On your direction, if you guys want us to just do patchwork, that's fine. We're more than happy to do so. You know, we receive these grants because they're big ticket items that we knew that we couldn't afford. Another option is is that you can increase the assessments. You increase the stormwater assessments, and we'll have enough money to hopefully accelerate some of these projects and sell on these projects.
Tell me, Robert, I'm sorry, tell me about the implications and and thank you. And and you made an excellent point there, and I want to make sure that everyone hears that. And and this is not a fun thing to talk about, but as as a municipality, we have sovereign immunity, which limits our liability. With these with these inverse taking cases, which we have been a part of in the past, you lose that protection. So I just, I want to make sure that it's clear that council hears and understands that as well as do the residents. Robert, what about these these particular grant funds? If we. Can we repurpose these or are the would these be lost?
Remember, these are three separate grants, just three separate contracts, so they're not lumped into one. So. If we were not to move forward with this, and I would ask council again, if we are still talking about one ways, we. Can't agree on minimum widths and stuff like that, I don't see us meeting. Any type of timeline that FEMA is going to put on us. So it asks to give that money back. We're not even signing the contract. For the LMS or the HMGP funds. You know, but. You know, we would just say, listen, you know, thank you, but no, thank you, and then just focus on the other two grants. But then we're gonna be on the hook again for any and all stormwater improvements in this area and other areas. That may be delayed because we don't have the money for it.
I I will also tell you for for hazard mitigation grant programs or HMGP and LMS projects, you know. Sending one back will not play in our favor anytime in the near future. I can promise you that. That that will be remembered. What about, and Chris, I do see you with your hand up, brother. Give me one second. What about our other? Engineering engineered options?
Again, we're gonna be. Instead of us looking at the forest, we're gonna be looking at the trees. And seeing where we can do maybe some minor repairs here and there. And see how it works, kind of like what we're doing on First and Forest. But again, you know. It it's hard when we're asked to maintain the dirt roadways, but not. Change anything. You know, it, again, there's no magic wand. There's no. There's, you you have to, and I hope everybody realizes the tough spot that staff is in or engineers are in. Is that, again, the question that's always posed to us is, hey, listen, we want to maintain the dirt roadways. We want to maintain the stormwater. We want to go ahead and get potable water systems to everybody. But we don't want to change anything. And that's really difficult for us to do. And also on a case by case basis, when, you know, we don't want to agree to any type of minimum standards. Whether it be to meet minimum standards for, you know, emergency services, or to meet our own minimum standards, which is nine foot lane widths. And our own land development code, and then also funding an engineer that would actually sign off on something that doesn't meet any standard. And then we would have to indemnify them if we're to be sued.
Yeah, which kind of takes away the some of the advantages and protections there for sure. All right, councilperson Sap, I saw you with your hand up.
So I I'm curious if there's a way that if we change our land development code to essentially create our own standard, if there's the opportunity there. I I know we have to measure it against something, but I guess what I'm thinking about here is a couple of years ago when we had to justify our fifteen miles an hour. Down the streets because the tickets were not holding up in court. We were able to say we had narrower roads. We have no sidewalks, you know, with the dirt roads. I'm just kind of curious if there's that that opportunity because the town is so unique. And, you know, even nationally with FEMA, I'm not sure. You know, I'm just wondering if they look at it a little bit differently because of how unique Windermere is.
I see where you're going there.
Look at it more from the environmental aspect of it as opposed to the the DOT aspect of it.
Yeah, it's interesting, Chris. I see where you're going there in terms of if we, rather than rather than fight against our own standards, we would set a standard. Which may allow us to comply with that standard and be in compliance with the grant. Language.
And in that case, so you're asking the federal government to change their contracts, their boilerplates, so on and so forth, and the minimum standards that they've established, and that may open the door for them to. Again, start doing that on a case by case basis, and I just don't see them doing that. And I'll refer to Jim and Bill on their experience on. Any requests to deviate from the standards that they've set for.
But but Orange County is kind of.
In the contracts? I didn't see any of that in the contracts. I didn't see any specifics.
To meeting minimum standards?
Yeah.
All right, we'll send you the highlighted portions tomorrow.
But Orange County is is. You know, is really doing the final stamp on these, right? I understand that they have to go with FEMA, but.
FEMA is doing the the stamp. Orange County, Orange County came up with the projects list, meaning the the they they, we had to negotiate with them to get us on the list.
County is just the pipeline.
Pretty much, yes. And now we're dealing with FEMA.
See, all these get ranked. They get ranked, basically, and then the priorities are are agreed upon, and then it then it. Funnels out to FEMA. Sorry, Chris, go ahead.
Hey, I was just asked for your your opinion on that because you've worked on the federal level, you know, of, you know, those type of, you know, small nuances. In going away from the one size fits all.
I mean, it's it's an interesting concept. I mean, our challenge is, we may have been able, it probably would have been easier to do earlier on. My experience with FEMA is that, you know, based upon your justification, you may be able to to get away with it, but also they use a lot of, they do the, they use PDMGs or project managers, basically, that. You know, their job is to is to match the project to the rulebook and to approve it. You know, I guess I would say, I guess I would say if we could agree upon something. And really agree upon something, then we could potentially do the justification and and fight the fight. But if we can't agree on something that we would be, we, you know, it would just be impossible.
Right.
Are we gonna have an issue with the Seventh and Butler project because the contract specifically states Sixth and Butler and nowhere in the in the. Submission, six hundred ninety two page submission. Is are there any specifics for Seventh Avenue? And our contract is specific for Sixth and Butler, not Seventh. So, great, we're gonna, well, I'm wondering if we're gonna have an issue with that.
No, because again, the the whole intent is to resolve the issue of that area. And anything that would improve any stormwater within that entire area would be a benefit. I don't see them balking at that.
Okay, good. All right. One other contract related question, just real quick. Sorry, Mayor, the. On the. Two CFR two hundred. Guidelines we're supposed to follow. We are the sub sub recipient, of course. And it states that we. And um, it states that we shall not execute non-competitive contracts to consultants that are on retainer contracts. Is that going to create any issue with, with us using the Kimley Horn to move forward? Or do we have to bid that out?
I'd have to take a look at that with Heather, um, as far as the IPOs, if we were to approve the design and or construction.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to point that out. So something.
I think it has to do with the, the thresholds of the um, the amounts that you're, that you're having to deal with as far as, you know, if it's underneath a certain amount, you're required per Florida statute to uh RFQ it out, uh, and the same thing for um, construction contracts. So we'll make sure that we're meeting all the qualifications of the CFAR and that we're not in non-compliance with that.
Okay, I'll email you the part that I'm questioning. Thanks.
I have a, um, also, Robert, when he does email you that, I've, I've got a consultant here that can probably um, and address those questions. Okay, council, we got, we got to give staff some direction here. So, um, where are we at?
Two, we need to come up with a standard sized road is, is where I'm seeing it. Do we need to agree on something that's a minimal? Whether it's 15 feet, 12 feet, whatever, I I think nine feet maybe just out of the question. I mean, my boat trailer is 10 feet wide. I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, here's my, I guess here's my question to that, Andy, to say, you know, let's just, you know, let's just say we approve, we say 10 foot. All right, we say 10 foot. And then we go, okay, 10 foot, i- is everybody okay with 10 foot and a, you know, and an 18 foot easement, you know, swell, or or do we just end up in the same place? This is my, this is my concern, you know, with, with what I'm hearing. So I I'm not anti that. I I'm just saying, I wonder if that gets us where we want to go.
But if the stormwater engineering works, it doesn't matter on the road width is what I'm getting at for the engineer end of it, correct? How? Your water calc are based not on the road width, based on the amount of water moving down the road.
That's good, that's correct. You can think of the drainage in the road as being um, separate, but um, so if you come up with a road width of 10 feet or whatever your standard is, I would have to kind of run it internally through my risk management folks to make sure that it is the standard of care for me to sign it. But that's a whole separate issue, but you as a town can establish whatever was standard.
But I'm thinking, I mean, the mayor and and Chris and everybody's back on the same subject, you know, we're talking about our standards. Whether it is an ordinance on water retention that we need to readdress and improve on because the houses are getting bigger. But if we can agree to a standard, at least we can argue a variance moving forward with other grants that we apply for. And so, and our town is unique. We, we sit nestled between a chain of lakes. We are unlike 99% of the other municipalities in the country. And this is why, but we do have a standard and this is it. We'll do 15 foot wide roads and this is what the swale system looks like per, in our initial designs. Is that even thought is an option? I mean, we, uh, we're probably going to end up losing this one as it is.
I mean, if you're trying to dictate something to somebody that's trying to give you money, um, I I know that's a tough hurdle to overcome. But as we've done in the past, we can always appeal and try to make our.
I mean, we've got a lot of argument when it comes to the trees we have, the quality of the lake, the quality of water in the lakes that surround our town. That's what makes us different. Okay, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue with you, Robert, at all, because I, I see, I, you guys are in a very, very tough spot, and I take full part of the blame on this deal. If we didn't give staff enough direction. And maybe we didn't know what we were getting into when we made those decisions. But now, knowing what we know now, you know, let's make the right decisions in moving forward. So do we step back and say, okay, we need to look at our, our land code and say, our minimum width of a road is going to look like this with a swale system of this, and that becomes our standard to work from?
We're more than happy to figure out whatever the council wants as far as a, a width of a roadway, but understand too, with these grants, once they are approved from whatever jurisdiction or agency has authority over those, whoever they give these grants to administer, they, they have to uh respond to the respective boards that, you know, the money that they're receiving is the projects are getting done, the money's being spent.
I totally get that, Robert. I got it.
Bill?
Our, our manager for this grant is uh at 2702 Director's Row. Familiar address. I- is it possible to have it come out and look at this and give us some guidance? I don't know the man, but I'm sure I parked in his parking spot more than once, but.
Probably remembers.
I hope not, but.
It's, that, you know, that's possible, um.
Because then maybe we'd have, you know, some idea, because right now we're just shooting into, you know, stabbing in the dark. We don't know.
My other question is this, um, you know, so we, you know, basically we've asked that, that, that staff and the engineers relook at at uh, at Seventh and and Butler, and I wonder if we're I don't, you know, it's yet to, yet to be known what we're, we're going to find from that, that rethink and relook. I don't know if, I don't know if we're missing an opportunity here, or, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to say yea or nay on this if, if we think the same thing could have, could occur, you know, may we get consensus over there and then we incorporate those things in, into uh this design?
Do we have time to wait on this till we see what that comes up with?
I don't know, defer to Robert on that. Robert?
Uh, we'd have to talk, talk to Doug Galvin and then uh see what his response is, who's our grant administrator, and then work our way up the ladder and see. But, you know, deviating from the minimal standards again is, we're just going to have to figure out the, the timeframe is always going to be the question, you know, um, what, what's going to be the standard? What, what, what is everybody going to be happy with? And I think that, you know, that's the hurdle that, you know, staff needs to understand of, you know, what exactly do you want?
Mayor, the one thing, the one thing that I would caution, having done grants for the last 12 years with the town, we had a great relationship with 319 grant people. Um, and when we submitted a grant for First and Forest with them initially, they came back and denied our grant because we as a town weren't going to pave our roads. And so we were fine with that. We said, that's no problem. The problem you're going to find with these grant folks that are going to offer up money are looking for people to follow standards and looking for people to take care of their own. And the 319 people literally came out, we had a great relationship with them. They loved our town. And they came out, what, and they came out and said, look, you guys aren't paving your dirt roads, and that's the problem with the lakes, and so we can't continue to give you grant money. And we were like, okay, well, that's fine then. And so we wiped that grant out. So it's just imperative and important for us to understand that if we can find happy mediums and grant dollars where people are willing to accept our limitations and our, you know, the way we want to continue to live, we may find ourselves in a funnel, finding less dollars that come into our town because of those grant opportunities, because most grant opportunities come in based on standards, based on what they know. And so I just caution you guys as you're making these decisions to understand that we've lost grants because of the uniqueness we're trying to keep. That's all.
John, and I, I agree. I, I do remember that conversation very, very well, and and we did a lot of business with those folks. Um, right up until we, right up until we didn't. Yeah.
I'm not saying it's right, well, different, I'm just saying that is a basis as you need to make decisions.
No, there, uh, there's a lot of risk here. This is, you know, I mean, this is uh, yeah, the, these are the, these are the tough ones. That's why you guys get all paid the big bucks. Um, all right. Uh, council, if you'll ponder for another minute, I, I'm going to ask that Teresa, make a quick comment, a, a quick comment, Teresa. And um, I believe that I owe Brandy a minute or two, and I would like to do that as well. Go ahead, Teresa, make sure you unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, perhaps, I, I was involved in the 2004 Hurricane FEMA and urban forestry grants for Treeboard when we had the four hurricanes back to back. And some of these grants provide for green infrastructure. And I'm pretty sure there's green infrastructure built into these grants as well. To your point, John, it's not just the permeable surface that is causing this water problem. It is the lack of urban forests. A lot of the urban forest has been denuded or bulldozed away for these mini mansions on the lake. Uh, you'll notice that a lot of our stormwater problems along Oak, Oakland, in front of um Brandy's and Bill's house, we've lost all the trees along that road that used to handle the stormwater mitigation. So perhaps we need to pivot and turn our attention to green infrastructure and how to handle this water using green infrastructure by planting trees back in. And we're talking Florida native trees, bald cypress, pond cypress, La Bland Bay, willow, water oak, black gum and buttonwood. All of these trees suck up large amounts of water and do it very efficiently. You see how well it works along Maguire, where we planted all those uh cypresses in the berms and swales along there. When water collects in there, those cypress shunt it right back up in the atmosphere very quickly. They're very efficient at uh taking care of that water. They're also very efficient at the Johnson Park where we bermed and swaled and planted in cypress, bald cypress, water oak. It shunts that water right back up. So let's talk about pivoting and using green infrastructure. These green biology machines called trees that do what we want them to do without adding more non-permeable surface. Just think outside the box and just plant trees. That's the answer. It's, it's the answer that we're looking for. If everyone will just think outside the box. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Brandy?
Yep, we're, we're still here.
Do you want to make comment now? I knew, I, we heard some, but I just want to make sure that, uh, I did promise you I'd come back.
Right. I mean, so just based on some of what some of the other residents said, I mean, we're fine with the one way too. I don't care which way I come out of my driveway either. We definitely don't want the two lanes, which I think that might be the direction we're heading in on Bessie Street, at least, you know, on our project, which I hope it is. Um, you know, we've said all along, we need to fix what's there. I, I'd be curious to see what kind of costs it would take to just fix the existing swales that are there, the ones over on Oakdale, the ones on ninth, and see what happens once we fix them. Because I just can't imagine getting, you know, whether it's everyone referring to Elmer or whoever, going out there and getting that dug out properly. I have literally myself, when we first moved there, witnessed Mr. Fry coming over and manually digging out that culvert because he was having flooding down at his property. So we've had neighbors go out there with their own shovel to fix what needs done there. And I, you know, I just don't think that it would be that much money. Um, another thing I just wanted to cycle back on that Chris made a comment about that we got these special uh, you know, agreements, whatever you want to call it, for having the 15 mile per hour speed limit because we have the narrow roads and the sidewalks, and I don't know all the details of that, but I'm going to guess that if we widen the roads to 15 or 18 feet, maybe we will no longer have that special right to keep our speed limits at 15 miles per hour. Um, so I am curious about that. And um, one other thing to go back to that Hal said, um, you know, I know you said that it's that your, your preference as an engineer would be to have a basin all in one place that catches that water, which right now is designed is down by Lake Bessie and the park. But I, I worked with, at the Corps of Engineers, my, my job was a biologist to do the best environmentally friendly thing, and I worked with tons of engineers, and I will tell you, it was a struggle to come to a compromise. But from an environmental standpoint, having more of that water retained, you know, upland and further away from that lake because more water will get infiltrated out that way, more of the bad nutrients, everything that you need to come out of it would come out of it long before it gets down next to the lake. Um, I think having a, you know, drainage control down there is important, but I don't think it should be the only one. And if you're in a constrained area where it's not agricultural land, where you have tighter properties in other situations, maybe two basins is what's best for this town, even if it's not the normal standard an engineer would like to lean towards. So, you know, that, that's my other, you know, main comments. And I, I do feel that a lot of that basin water is coming from those five homes that it showed on that map, which I've only seen for a blip there for a second. But I don't know why you would cross that to the other side of the street, you know, with, if the houses are getting bigger and the impervious surface is becoming a problem, we might need to relook at our ordinance. Maybe retaining just one inch of rainfall isn't enough. Because it's just going to keep adding to the town if we really think the majority of it's time. So I.
Thank you, Brandy.
Yep.
Much appreciated. All right, council, the ball's back in your court. We need to give, uh, need to give staff some direction in terms of uh how we would like to proceed. Um, what, Robert, what, what exactly is our timeframe here?
Well, currently there is no timeframe because we haven't even executed the contract. We've been waiting for that for about two months now. Um, we have submitted quarterly reports and the reports do reflect that we're still waiting for council's direction on the concept before we enter to enter into the design phase, um, which the design phase and construction would be the only two phases that are funded through the um, the grants.
Right, so there's no pre-order costs or anything. Okay.
But, but again, um, you know, I would say time is of the essence, um, because once we do sign that contract, you know, they're going to want to see some movement or get closer and closer to design. And the more that this keeps getting punted, um, you know, again, we don't want to lose that relationship by holding on to money that could have been used somewhere else.
So I will ask council this question, if we were to suggest the one-way format, and, and does that get us to a place that we're willing to investigate? Now, I guess I have to say one way and a, and a minimum width. You know, I think that, I think Andy makes a good point, his, his boat trailer is 10 feet wide. Doesn't take much to get there, so maybe we want to say, I don't know, 12 feet or something like that in terms of a one-way road. Do we feel like that will get us closer to where we want to go? But remember that you still have, you know, you still have to have the conveyance to move the water, which is in the, the swales. Um, so I don't know that those would change drastically, although certainly they would be narrower overall because we just would have lopped off anywhere, but you know, maybe five, six, seven, eight feet, depending what, what width we decide on.
Uh, what's the average now between uh ninth, or, or excuse me, Oak, going down ninth, Oakdale to Bessie, or excuse, east to Bessie, uh, what, what's our range right now of uh road width?
Sure. So.
Just hard to see.
12 feet east of Oakdale, 12 feet right there. You have 12 feet here, then it goes to 10, and then it goes to nine.
Yeah, you're already pretty. Those are actuals or proposed?
Uh, existing. Those are all existing.
Those are existing. Okay. So, you know, yeah, you would. So the lowest, the, the smallest we saw existing is nine or eight?
Nine, nine, let me keep on looking.
No, I, I mean, that gives us a pretty good.
Yeah. There's another nine and then 10.
I'm interested if there's, if there's any interest.
So I, I do, I do have interest because as I said before, this has come up outside of this project, so a- a- and in regards to, I think we could possibly, I'm not an expert at this, make the argument when we have our shoulders there that gives the extra room for our emergency vehicles, uh, because they're flat surfaces.
Yeah.
Uh, that we look at something between a 10 and 12 foot one-way. Um, and then I think the swales, once we get to final design, may end up shrinking anyways, because obviously there's not as much roadway, um, I think is that you alluded to, uh, mayor, uh, you know, uh, for that water to take in that extra water, you know, so hopefully, um, that would reduce the swell size to, you know, they start sharpening the pencil. On our wider roads anyways, we're already at 18, 20 feet, you know, so I think it's a, it's kind of a moot point. But at least it gives us directions on some of these roads that we have, you know, heavy choke points.
Yep. Cons are, we may have a, we may have a difficult time getting that signed off. Um, council, any, any thoughts on that? O- o- on this thought in terms of the uh one-way designation?
So if we do that, then we, we disqualify ourselves for the grant funds.
Oh, I don't know that that's the case. I think that we were trying not to do that. Is that, is, do we feel that's the case?
And that was my goal, was to try to come up with a, with a compromise where one, we, we That was my goal, was to try to come up with a, with a compromise where, one, we have a fix once and for all for this basin for stormwater. But two, to be able to salvage, you know, these funds. And then three, once, you know, once we hopefully get back to normal, you know, this, this, this may be that solution for some of that cut-through traffic. So kind of killing three or four birds.
We would just need to know, again, if you want 12 feet, I think the green book standard is nine feet. As, you know, Hal already stated, 15 would be the minimum for an emergency vehicle. I don't know if the shoulder would count for that or not. But we would need to know, you know, again, from what intersection to which intersection are you looking for a one-way? And then which direction do you want the one-way?
And Robert, you know, that nine foot is based up on a two-way road. I'd have to do some research to see if there's any standard that would meet the 12-foot, other than a town-specific code. You know, the town code can be 12 feet and, but I have to look to see if, whether another Ashtoe, another standard, I could find something. And that would be research on my part to see if anywhere else in the United States, you know, that 12-foot's being used, you know, on a federal level or a state level would be my two cents. Because if it's just a town-specific code, then we'd have to make sure that that would be acceptable to FEMA.
Thanks, Hal, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
And we'd be able to bring that to town council at the next meeting, which is two weeks away.
I think we'll learn some of, some more information when we see the revised Seventh and Butler plans or designs that may, we may be able to apply to this to salvage this as well.
I don't think we're gonna have those designs by then. I mean, our next step would be an IPO for design, so.
For Seventh and Butler, we're not gonna.
Yeah.
Additional. All right, my mistake. Or we don't have enough time to wait for that, I guess, before we decide on this.
But I do believe there'll be a lot of information in the IPO moving forward because that's, that's very specific direction to Kimberly Horn.
Right. I still haven't heard from a couple council people on the one-way. Obviously we'll have to work out the details on that, that maybe, we can take a few seconds and do that. But, I mean, so let's just say for the sake of discussion purposes, a 12-foot one-way road. Is any, are we getting interest? And what do you think the residents are gonna think? Okay.
I have interest and I understand that the bulk of the traffic going through there, I think, is in the afternoon. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
So maybe we do one-way to kill that off as well, whatever direction it is.
Okay, Councilperson Williams?
Yeah, I would say coming out of, I mean, heading down towards Bessie from Brandy's house, so some from Oakdale, and then heading, I guess that's east and then north again, as a one-way direction? Because that'd be the opposite of the afternoon traffic.
I concur. Councilperson McKinley, any interest, sir?
Not really. Because we're still looking at the 14-foot swales and all this. And I have to be honest with you. In all the manuals I've looked at on maintaining dirt roads, not a one of them has anything anywhere near this. Last week I went to North Georgia up in the mountains, drove on roads that were 13-foot wide and had a small ditch on each side. And they controlled their stormwater. And I just, it baffles me as to why we can't do the same thing here. We've got a grant that is going to require us to jump through certain hoops, and I understand that. And my suggestion, as for all it's worth, is that to maintain our good graces or as good as we can with FEMA and LMS, is to go ahead and return this one. Let's sit back, take a look at the problem areas we have in here, because I don't think we need all this. Let's look at the problem areas we have and address that. We have nothing, again, like we'd over at Fernwood Park, we have nothing in the Bessie park there other than one suggested retention area. I think we could collect the water at the bottom there in the retention area and let it then perk out into the lake after it strained through the system.
But how are you gonna get it there?
I don't, I just, I can't get on board with, with jumping through these hoops on this project. Now, Second Avenue, absolutely. I mean, we've, we've done a lot there. But we're talking about changing a lot of landscape here, for what? What are the problem areas that we have? Where is it flooding at? And I haven't seen that. And I do know that I requested a copy of all of this documentation and Mike sent me several hundred pages and I dug through it. And I can tell you that the photos or the diagrams that are in there don't even come close to what's being proposed here. And that was supposed to be the actual proposals. They don't match. So I'd like to know exactly what we're doing. What are we going to do? What was in the request? What hoops do we have to jump through to do this? But in this one, if we're getting down to the point to where we're gonna be deciding road width and, and everything and creating ordinances, that's gonna be a long process.
Okay.
And I would just recommend at this point that we tell them, thank you, but we've got some more designing we have to do on this and things we have to look at, and we really appreciate it. But I am not for continuing with this grant.
Yeah, McKinley, I did pose the question last meeting, all grants and monies aside, direct on the record to Hal, would he change the stormwater plan in any way? And his answer was no, is that still the answer, Hal? Monies aside, you know, we don't care where it's coming from, if it's coming from, you know, under our mattress or from the federal government or an MSBU, you know, would you change the swell system that you've proposed?
I know, that's, that's funding aside, we would, from an engineering standpoint, we would recommend the same solution.
Okay. You know, part of this too is I also understand and recognize that there are different, there are some different solutions with deeper ditches. But I don't know that, you know, those do work in rural settings. I mean, there's no doubt about it. But, you know, I don't think that that is gonna get you the walkability and the look. And also then you have to do something with all that velocity in terms of water. So I, you know, I am not an engineer, I'm the first one to say it, but I just, I don't know if that's what we want either. You know, we have that on, on Liz's street and I know, God, everybody hated that too.
Well, to slow the water down, they usually put riprap in there at different places to slow it down and break it. Seems to work in other places.
And I agree, it totally works in those more rural settings. I just don't know if you want that in our density level. And then you actually do have a pretty unattractive ditch from what I've seen. So that's just my opinion, I don't know if it's the ultimate solution.
Deep ditch, all you're doing is feeding the water. First of all, if we had dirt rather than ground-up asphalt on some of these streets, dirt, the water will perk. A large part of it will. Right now it's just running down the street because we put shale. You don't need to go to the ocean to find seashells, just walk out here in front of my house. Walk down to Fifth Avenue. There's all kinds of seashells out there. We're putting the wrong stuff on the roads. We are not maintaining, we have nothing that has been maintained as far as stormwater control in a lot of the areas in town. Now, I'm not blaming staff for that, I'm not blaming engineering for that. I think they have done an outstanding job and done what councilors told them. I just think that council needs to sit back, determine what we want for the people, what the people really want, figure out how we can do that and then give it to staff as a task. But we can't keep bouncing around spending more money. I'm sure that in all this preliminary design and all this stuff, the Kimberly Horn is not doing this for free. Out of the goodness of their hearts, it's costing us money. So the more time and energy we put into this, the more money we're gonna be spending. When we could be using that towards solving some of the problems that we have with stormwater, some of the flooding issues we have. I don't think this whole area floods or we have washouts through that entire area.
I don't think anybody's saying the whole, I don't.
Extend a little bit, so.
I don't think that, Councilperson, I don't think that anyone's saying that the whole area floods. I think what we're saying is that we want to control where that water goes. The fact that the sediment stays before the lake, not in the lake.
Right.
No, no one's saying all these areas flood. There is localized flooding that is attributed to some of these situations. But I don't think anyone's saying that every little area floods. I think what we are saying is we would like for the sediment to stay in locations where it can be perked prior to getting into the lake.
I agree with that, totally.
Good.
So we don't have anything in Fernwood Park right now, other than the one out, one retention area there at, by Eighth or Seventh Avenue or Eighth Avenue. So maybe we need to look at putting one in there to catch that water that we have directed down there. I just, I just don't think you need a 14-foot wide or 18-foot wide swell to direct the water. I mean, from an engineering standpoint, yes, it's in the book. This is what you need and that's what's put in there. In practical application, I think it'll work with a whole lot less. And it doesn't have to be two foot deep. If you crown the road and feed the water off the sides, the water will run down the side of the road to wherever you direct it to. I think it's pretty simple. I'd be glad to send you the books that I've read on it. There are manuals that are put out by other people that have dirt roads and how they maintain them. But if we're going to re-engineer this, the thing of it, then, then let's have at it and let's go ahead and keep spending money on engineering. When engineering cannot fit what the residents of this town want, they want to keep the small dirt roads, they want minimum impact. And I realize it's difficult to control stormwater with minimal impact. But if you need a 14-foot wide swell to control stormwater, I just can't swallow that.
Come on, numbers.
Again.
So, go ahead, Liz.
Sure, okay. So while I appreciate that you will say, Hal, that an engineer, any engineer will say that, you know, this is the ideal because this is what's going to work the best. When I had a design department underneath me in corporate communications, I had some creative talent in there that didn't ever want to work within budget that was imposed on them by other departments because they didn't want to put their name or associate their name with something that wasn't up to their standards of quality. And that was a very personal thing for them. I realize this is not a personal thing for you, but, but I understand it's a similar concept where you know what's the best thing from an engineering standpoint. And it's difficult to, or you don't, you don't want to associate your company with something that's substandard, in your opinion on that. I had to explain to my creative people that the other departments didn't want to pay their hourly rate for something that, you know, they didn't want to overpay, there was a budget to work within. And I think that the, how we can make that similar here is we can say that the town, our residents have said that they, they don't really want what's actually gonna be the most effective from an engineering standpoint solution here. So that means to me, I mean, to just be perfectly honest, I don't know that I can really come to a decision that's gonna say, yes, I'm going to, I'm going to be in support of, of the concept that we're looking at now and widening these roads and taking the grant money and going to those standards that are required of us. Because even though I know that that makes sense and it's gonna be the best solution for our stormwater management, I still don't hear from our residents that that's what they want. And so I'm, if you're going to ask me, Mayor, what I think would be the solution that I could go towards tonight, it would be a combination of kind of old-school fixes where we plant more trees, we do spot fixing on areas that really have storm management issues here and there flooding. We reestablish the former structure and actually maintain it of the swales that were there before, before we try anything new. We strengthen our stormwater retention ordinance and we pursue some grants via EPD, that's the Environmental Protection Division, to help our residents with their stormwater retention and educate them on how they can be a part of the solution by retaining more water on their properties. And that would be where I would go. So that means that, that I guess I'm saying, I think that like, like Councilwoman McKinley thinks, we should turn down this grant money for now and try to find some solutions with what we had before, work those to the best that we can. And if those, and recognizing that that's a risk that we're gonna take, that we might, we might have some, some issues and hope, we'll, we'll pray, I guess, for our neighbors' patience as we work through how we, how we put in those spot fixes. This is imperfect, but it's, it's where I'm gonna go based on all of the feedback that I've heard.
It's, it's quite a bit imperfect.
It is.
About that, because here, here's, you know, listen, I get it. I mean, nobody, you know, nobody likes to see change. I appreciate that, especially change that is in their front yard. But I will tell you that if you think this meeting's difficult, change our stormwater, stormwater ordinance to retroactively make every homeowner hold their first inch. And I don't know how many, I hope we got a big Zoom license because we're gonna need it. Even though it may be the best thing. I mean, there's no doubt in my mind that probably is the best thing. But that is gonna be contentious beyond this by a thousandfold. The other thing I know is that history in this town tells me that we're here today, we will kick the can and we will pay triple down the road, I promise you. But, you know, certainly I also, you know, it's our job to represent the people. And if that's, if that's what you guys feel like nobody wants it, then, you know, I don't want to put people through the paces for no reason, but I think we're passing up an opportunity. I wish we could do it better, I wish we could do it smaller. But if you guys, you know, if we're not feeling, if we're not feeling any, you know, I think, I think we got a few people who feel like we could do it with a one-way and maybe get, get to a good place. But it also, it doesn't look completely like that's what, what we're thinking, so. Go ahead, Andy.
Hey, sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine now.
Because we're, you know, we're talking about, you know, what, some of the residents, I mean, we've got, let's see, Bill, Joe, Simon, who else lives right there on East that are still with us that haven't left us at Hour Three? On their opinion, if we go to a 12-foot with a one-way, would that be acceptable? Is my question. Because we're kind of guessing that they would.
We are guessing.
But we've got, you know, four out of probably the 10 people that live on that street.
Yep, I'm fine, anybody that lives on that street, if they just want to give us a yea or a nay, that would be more than fine with me.
Rick and Brandy are still against it. I mean, I still think the whole plan is just too big for our streets and on Bessie.
Thank you, Brandy.
Yep.
Yea or nay, guys, please?
This is Joe Tenzar. You know, I think without more research to understand the impact of a one-way and, and how the, the traffic might change. I, you know, I don't know if it's gonna slow people down or restrict access to that road or the usage of that road by making it a one-way. I just think it was, it was a, an alternative to, to a massive road that would, you know, impede my property and big oak trees and lakes. So I'm still opposed, but, you know, I would say it's better than having 18-foot.
Thank you, Joe. Bill, I see your, your mic's open, brother.
Are we talking nine feet or are we talking 12 feet? I mean, I don't, what's the?
12 right this second.
Yeah, I think we were talking 12, sir.
Why 12 other than nine, which is the one-way, you know, standard?
And nine isn't the one-way standard.
Yeah, I think it's, we were trying to compromise with something that was reasonable, but.
Well, I think we're, we're prob, what is the, what is the width of the road in front of my house right now? It's probably closer to 12 than it is nine.
Probably. Okay. We find that, we find that they're generally wider than people, you know, actually, actually, you know, eyeballing that.
Yeah. Well, you know, I'm just unfair of keeping whatever I have out there the same. If it's one-way, that's fine, I don't care what's wet on my driveway. But I just don't want to see the road widen to 18 feet.
Is that a yea or a nay?
That's why we said 12.
Uh, three feet. 12 is a, I gotta get a contest, I got two women alongside me. Are we, are you yea on 12?
All right, we'll get back to you in a while.
That's okay. That's okay.
Did you get a consensus there, Bill?
Yeah, I got a yea on twelve, yes.
Okay, yea on twelve. All right. Who's next? And I, I do see you, Bill. We'll get right back to you.
Hello, it's Simon again. Um, I'm curious to see the flow of traffic because the garbage man and also the post man as well comes down towards the lake. So they have to wrap around and go around as well.
That, yeah, I, I think we've generally been able to work that type of thing out, school buses and, and, uh, and, and service vehicles, you know, tend to work it out.
And, and if I may add, Kimberly Horn also did our traffic study, so I, I, I think there could be a collaboration.
Yeah, for sure.
But aren't we really doing an exercise of futility right now? Cause Hal said he would have to check with his risk management to even sign off on something like that?
Hey, we're not, we're not getting into, we're, we're just trying to get a general feeling. Uh, Councilperson Williams asked for that. I thought it was reasonable to see if the residents were coming along with anything, you know, and negative or positive, so we could at least hear that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Any additional yays or yays from people who live right there? All right, I see none. Did we lose, uh, I think we lost Robert. Oh no, he went down there. I see he went down to the bottom. All right. Um, Robert's back. He, you know, that sounded about fifty fifty as well, so.
Yeah. Can, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, the federal grant money, are you saying that we still have to chip in three hundred thousand dollars to get one point two million for this project?
Yes, the chip in twen- it's a, it's a federal cost share of twenty-five percent.
So we're going to spend three hundred thousand dollars and we actually need another nine hundred thousand dollars to fix the problem in this area?
I- if you, if you were to use the full amount, it would be twenty-five percent of whatever the project cost is.
I'm like, are you telling me that I, you can't fix that washout on my street for less than three hundred thousand dollars?
It's not, I don't think, I think that's apples and oranges, Bill.
How's that apples and oranges?
Well, because this is for a lot more than just in front of your, in front of your yard there, so.
Well, I'm talking about Ninth Avenue. That's a third of what I just saw on the project of the Betsy Drason, uh, the Betsy Basin, right?
I, I, I mean, first of all, we're, we don't, you know, we don't have the price yet. Um, but I mean, you know, it's pretty standard with what these types of projects will cost. I mean, I'm not saying they're cheap.
I just changed my vote. I don't like both feet.
Hang, hang on, Bill. John, how much should, how much did we spend on the, the, the basin? How much was that project? For, um, first?
For first and forest, it was, uh, like six, seven hundred thousand, I think, but it was all, most of it was funded by South Florida Water Management.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, obviously.
That was, that was addressing a large basin and to Bill, you know, just, just for your point, it's not just about what's happening to your house. It's how do we control water upstream? So we always look at the basin to avoid
Right.
problems on your house. So it is important that, you know, we look at the larger picture because we can't just kink a hose. So I just defer to the fact that whenever we look at a project, we always look at the overarching stormwater basin.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah. So
All right.
We've gotten in problems before. It's gotten us into lawsuits in the past where we tried to pinch a hose in front of someone else's house and it's caused problems elsewhere. So we do have to holistically look at someone. I wanted to put that in there for Robert tonight.
Councilperson Martini, I know you had a comment. I mean, we can wrap this up.
Just a question for Robert and, and Robert, I do want to, um, thank you for all the, the hard work that you guys are doing on this. I know we have put you in between a rock and a hard place and I agree with Andy Williams. It, it is partially his fault. So, um, but my question is, i- i- our water master plan, is that going to be implemented soon enough to, to be even considered as part of this project, that six foot utility easement, or can we kick that can down the road as far as where that goes like we're doing on Forest?
I mean, even if we kick it down the road, you still have to plan for it. Um, and that's going to be part of the design because in two or three years, you don't want to have the same dialogue or the same issues. You want to make sure that the residents know where you're going to be putting that, that water system.
I know.
And you're meeting minimum standards of the three feet, you know, it's an additional three feet in order to make that six foot.
I know, but we're not doing that on Forest. So I'm trying to, what I'm asking basically is what's the timeframe for having the water installed? I mean, is it, if it's two or three years down the road, that's one thing, but if it's ten years, that's, it's not even worth talking about at this.
You, 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 you have, I mean, if you do, if you buy it off in small chunks, which we're, we're trying to do with, with these, uh, three projects, um, you know, you, you, you're going to have the money to do it because you've been saving money. You, you've paid for the master plan and now you're saving money for the design, um, for the overall, um, you know, whatever the, you had three different sections and you can save the money for that. Um, but if we're going to go ahead and open up areas, you might as well throw the pipe in while that construction project's going on, but you're just going to save money in the long run.
Oh, so we're talking about actually, actually putting the pipe in on these projects as well?
Absolutely. That's why we asked for the extensions of West Orange or West Second Avenue and on, uh, Butler and Sixth and Seventh is because we're engaging Orange County Utilities, uh, because when we first, uh, submitted for the, uh, HMGP, uh, we didn't include the water lines because we didn't have an approved, uh, master utility plan. Now that we do have that, it just makes sense to go ahead and do it while we have uh, the construction going on.
Okay, that's my misunderstanding. I didn't realize we were putting, laying those pipes as well at the same time. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I wasn't paying attention at some point, apparently.
Free water. You get free water, you get free water, you get free water. Um, all right. So I mean, I, 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 at this point, um, pretty much we've got, we've only got really one option on the table and that's to, to put it on the agenda as a one way. And, um, see what council thinks at that point, I think, Robert.
Okay, then as Hal stated, we'll, we'll see what standards there are as far as a one way and if they vary from, uh, anything that FEMA would be acceptable to.
Roger. Either way, we, we would have to, um, we have to vote yea or nay on that even to return the funds. So, um, I believe that that, uh, that's our, that's pretty much our, our option there.
Hey, uh, when you, when you speak to them, be clear that we will have those shoulders and, you know, i- if there's some sort of negotiation that, that can be for emergency vehicle use. Um, because obviously nine plus three plus three, there's our fifteen. So just kind of curious if that's part of where the math comes from.
Well, I mean, you mean for the minimal standards because the minimal standards in the green book call out for the three foot shoulder on each side.
Correct. So I'm saying if we did eight, you know, nine foot, so they're nine foot lanes. So if you have a single lane, that's not three foot on each side is fifteen total. I just said an extra two feet, you know, or three feet to twelve because we had the discussion of trailers and things like that. We know that, you know, lawn trailers, boats, things, you know, nine foot may be a little bit tight.
Trash truck.
Right. So if we have twelve and then three on each side, um, you know, that's a, that's a pretty big swap for, uh, emergency vehicles to get down with no problem, I would think.
All right. Thank you, everyone, staff, council, residents. Um, I don't know, it's not a perfect solution, um, but obviously we can, uh, we could look at it and, um, you know, talk to some other folks, think about it and see where we go from here. Uh, it'll be on the agenda, uh, for our next, uh, council meeting. Um, at this time, I believe that's the concludes our formal agenda. Um, any, any council, uh, items that they'd like to report out on? I want to thank everybody for, um, oh, okay. Thank you, Bob. I was, Bob, I was going to thank you for your work with, uh, uh, with the elders. Um, do you want to talk about that real quick?
Yeah, that's, that's what I want to talk about. We had a elders, uh, kind of a virtual luncheon today and, uh, like to thank, uh, Bill for, uh, coordinating and getting us a discount, uh, for the, uh, Chick-fil-A sandwiches that were given out. Uh, there were some of the homemade stuff, uh, and then what we purchased from Chick-fil-A. And we had a bunch of people take it around to the different, uh, elders and they were very, very appreciative. It, uh, super, super thing. And that's the first one we've been able to have since, uh, February. So, uh, it, it, it worked really good and a big shout out to the, uh, committee for Susan and all of them that were in that. Uh, they helped out and, uh, thank you, everyone, uh, Liz and everyone else that sent out letters and information to give to the elders. Uh, some of them have not been out of their house since March. So it's, uh, i- i- it's pretty tough on them and, uh, we try to keep in touch and then of course the police department has the, uh, elders check that they go around, uh, and check on them all the time, but, uh, it was, it was a real success today and, uh, we're planning another one for, uh, Christmas. So.
I appreciate all the efforts of, of you, sir, as well as the committee. And all the volunteers and Bill never gets me a discount at Chick-fil-A. So clearly you guys are very special.
They were one sandwich short when, when, uh, they were splitting up the, the sandwiches. I, Susan told me the, there were fifty-two households that we
Yeah.
contributed to today, which was amazing. That, uh, it was great. Great job, Bob.
Yep, great.
And then I, it was involved.
I feel a sandwich short tonight as well. So, uh, but, uh, no, we do appreciate everybody's hard work on that. Um, any staff reports?
Uh, yes, as you all are aware, uh, Scott Brown, um, submitted his resignation. We will be advertising for the position starting tomorrow. Um, after that, we'll probably keep it open for about thirty days, uh, depending upon what the response is. Uh, then we'll create uh, somewhat of a selection committee who would comprise of myself, uh, John Fitzgibbon, Travis, and then possibly either, um, probably, uh, Chris Sapp, who is the, uh, Roads and Streets Liaison. We go through the, uh, resumes. We would, um, narrow down to interviews, do the interviews and then present something to town council.
Should make sure they, you should make sure they watch tonight's mu- uh, meeting before they apply.
Um, and then we have
Everybody.
We have the Halloween parade on Saturday. Um, so it, that's put on by Parks and Recreation and then the Windermere Police Department Foundation is also chipping in some goodies for the kids. Um, you know, anything that's access to leftover, the police department will be handing out on West Second Avenue on Halloween night. The boathouses again, um, I know there were some, uh, discussions relative to, uh, some hearsay and some, uh, stuff that was going out there. I did post a video saying, you know, hold on, uh, let's stop the rumor mill until council has a chance to talk about those uh, and decide, uh, what they want to do with that. Again, there's no rush on that issue because the, uh, leases expire in February. Uh, so I can bring it up in December or I can go ahead and punt it over to twenty twenty-one, uh, depending upon what your, uh, what the agendas are going to look like for the next two months. Remember that November town council meeting is going to be in person. We're going to be beta testing, uh, how to do, uh, a hybrid where we do, do both Zoom and in person. Um, and then DRB for November is going to be a very important DRB. So I do ask that you either attend either in person or by Zoom. Uh, we'll be discussing the redevelopment of the five hundred block and that should be coming to you in December, uh, for their redevelopment plan. Um, and then as far as, uh, Councilman Martinez stated, um, when we do these Zoom meetings, uh, for the residents, um, we can break it up in any way that you want it. You know, typically, you know, when it comes to a DRB variance, then we notify everybody within five hundred feet. Uh, and that's a certified mailer. Um, you know, um, you know, the, the initial reason that we just wanted to do the, um, door hangers, um, was to reach out to the residents that were directly impacted first, have a meeting with them. Pretty much unlimited time for them to discuss their issues, their concerns, and then have a secondary meeting to where we open it up for the general public to have their comments and concerns. Um, and then bringing it to a town council workshop. The reason we didn't have a chance to do that this one is because the, the, the time crunch that we're in right now. Um, but that is the, um, intent for future meetings where to be having a one, have a meeting where we just have the direct uh, impact to the residents and then have a broader, um, uh, meeting for the, uh, general public, then bringing it to town council. Uh, a great example of that is we're going to be having a, uh, meeting with people on Lake Butler Boulevard, relatives to the pedestrian bridge, uh, older main from the canal to, uh, Second Avenue to discuss, uh, that section of paved roadway. And then again, open it up for general comments, but um, I would defer to town council on which direction you want us to go as far as notices and so on and so forth.
I, I, I think personally, I think all meetings should be, especially Zoom meetings, should be o- on the town calendar. So that we, I mean, just the, the meeting that you had, uh, last week with, with the residents that were affected, obviously there were people that were left out that felt they should have been included. And that is a smaller part of a bigger project that affects many more, many more people in town than just the ones on that street. And yeah, maybe they don't have any input, but I think the more informed residents are, the more chances they have to, to listen and hear information. Um, the, and sooner, the better off we are all going to be. And so, you know, it says right in our charter that, uh, you know, our residents, they're keeping our residents informed and knowledgeable is, is a priority. So I really think we should make all those meetings, uh, townwide.
Any additional comments for, uh, Robert on that topic? Um, I certainly agree. More is better. Um, although, you know, sometimes those targeted meetings are important because you, you, you do want to get those individuals who are most impacted. Um, but that is a, you know, i- it's a challenge. Someone's always going to feel left out. So, um, I think perhaps the best way is to go ahead and include everybody and then we will go from there. Um, if that becomes burdensome, uh, in some way that it's not working, we, we can address it all, uh, together. So. Anything else for the good of the order? Oh, go ahead, Bill.
On the calendar, we can certainly do door hangers for people who are, you know, directly affected, but let's put it on the calendar also, um, just so that we can say, you know, everyone was aware.
Another good point about that is anyone who is interested in possibly serving on town council or not any other capacity for the town, um, they might wish to be informed about general issues in the town. So it does affect people beyond just those immediate neighbors impacted.
So, I mean, but for more clarity, do you want us to do door hangers just within the impacts or within five hundred feet? And then do the general advertising on Facebook and social media?
I, I think the intent is general advertising on, on Facebook, the calendar, website, social media, hangers within five hundred, right? Everybody nod or say no to me?
That's fine with me, yeah.
Yes.
Fair?
Yes.
Is that too, is that too, is that doable for staff, Robert?
We'll make it doable.
Thank you, Robert.
Thanks, man.
Thanks, Robert.
All right. We will go for, um, anything else for the good of the order?
Um, Jim, um, can you hear me?
I can.
Um, on the note of making the Zoom link, uh, it is not intuitive. When I went to, uh, the town website tonight, I had to navigate around to find that link. And for anybody who's elderly, they're not going to find it at all. So I'd like to make a, some kind of recommendation that we make it easier to get to that Zoom link. Uh, it looked like there was a link in the agenda, but when you went to the agenda, you could not, that link would not open the Zoom.
Um, but, but Teresa, it's literally on the landing page. Like it's on the landing page. You click it and it takes you right there.
Yeah, but when you go down to details, it's not, it's not there. Uh, so I don't know if we can make it easier to get people to so you'll have more people attend the meetings, but I, I don't think it's very, uh, intuitive for most people to navigate.
There's a, there's a, a line that says join Zoom meeting here. Maybe we could put that in a button or something.
There you go. Something really obvious.
It's not on the agenda button. When you click the agenda, you're not going to get that.
All right.
All right. All right. Hey, we'll, we'll look at that, but I just, I mean, I thought when you go to the town of Windermere website, it says click meeting, you click it and it takes you right to the Zoom link a- and, and the agenda item.
Actually tells you to go down, it says Zoom, it says Zoom, um, link is in details below and you go to details button and it's not there.
All right. Wait, we're not, we'll, we'll take a look at it. If it's, can be made easier, we'll make it as easy as possible. All right. We, we're not, we'll, we'll take a look at it. If it's, can be made easier, we'll make it as easy as possible.
Okay.
Um, all right. Anything else? Thank you, council. I know these are tough ones, but uh we will uh, we'll continue doing the best we can. Thank you, staff. I know uh, and, and all of uh, everybody with the engineers and everything. And John, we appreciate you guys being here, answering the tough questions and appreciate all the resident input. Um, and we will see you at our next meeting uh in uh November.
Thank you.
So, we're adjourned.
Thank you.